Mayor Andrews suggested operating under this, and that should be ad hoc rather than what you see there.
Okay.
Duly noted?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Page two of the minutes.
Oh, HHC.
I don't know what page it is and anything else, but it's page two of the minutes.
Yeah, I see it.
Fourth paragraph, you find it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the consent calendar?
I think...
We'll go with Essen and then McKinney.
Oh, consent calendar, sorry. Another place.
All right.
I was thinking of minutes.
Are we in minutes?
Well, the consent calendar has the minutes in it.
Oh, I see. Okay. Oh, okay, I got you. All right, so yeah, I have something.
What?
And I'm trying to give it to you. Counselors, confirm that the ad hoc can even set up similar... All right. Nobody move. I lost it. Couldn't be that important then. Oh, I just don't see it. I passed.
Counselor McKinney, or actually Counselor Johnson and then Counselor McKinney have asked that the item pertaining to the public works vehicles be pulled from the consent calendar, so that is not part of the consent calendar to be adopted, that will be added to new business. Counselor McKinney?
Following this housekeeping here, I was wondering if we could observe a moment of silence for the four police officers killed in the last couple of days.
In where?
In the last couple of days, four police officers have lost their lives, assassinations and others alike, and we have police in the back, and I think it would be appropriate for us as an official body that's responsible for police and the security of our community is to have a moment of silence remembering not only these officers, but their families and the communities that they serve.
Thank you. Anything else on the consent calendar? Any other agenda items? Anything for council business? We have two items already on council business, nothing else to be added at this time. So with that, and following the suggestion of Counselor McKinney, which thank you very much, I appreciate it, we will be at rest for a moment of silence to remember those that have deceased that were from our law enforcement ranks. Thank you for participating, appreciate it. Anything else on council business? Might have shaded out. With that, then we're going to adjust the presentations this evening, and we're going to start with the Narcon demonstration, and then we'll go to the presentations on winter storm preparation. So if Officer Cook and what's-his-name come forward, why?
Thank you. Good evening, council and Mayor Andrews, Brian Casey, Newburgh Dundee, Chief of Police, Mark Cook, I'm a sergeant with Newburgh Dundee Police.
Speaking of the mic as we're recording.
I'm Mark Cook, I'm a sergeant with Newburgh Dundee Police.
Thank you.
So the city manager had asked that we come and do a little presentation on Narcan, which is an opiate overdose kit that the police officers carry. So Sergeant Cook here actually saved a guy's life here recently using it, so I thought I'd bring him and have him demonstrate how it works and a few other things. And while we're doing that, I thought we'd talk about a few other things we carry in the cars, where it's just out of a matter of interest. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, I suppose, we actually carry quite a bit of first aid medical equipment, and some of our guys are really highly trained in the use of some of that equipment. And for example, the AEDs, the defibrillators, we carry in every patrol car, have used these on numerous occasions to help.
Those are the AEDs?
Excuse me?
The AEDs?
Yeah. Yep, so, anyway, and then I have, I'll just start here real quick, and we'll let Sergeant Cook go from here, but this is actually an infrared temperature gauge, or a thermometer that we carry with us, and we use this a lot actually in cars for animals, because we get a lot of calls over the summer. And it's very interesting, I mean, you just put like the red dot, and Denise is 69, the mayor's 32. So, but this is an effective tool for animals that have been locked up in cars. So with that, I will let Mark start with a Narcan unit, and he can, we'll pass that around, let you look at it, and then Mark, anything you want to add as you're talking, feel free to do that.
Thanks, Chief. So each officer has been trained in and issued a Narcan unit, and these are specific to opiates. So it's for heroin or people who overdose on prescription narcotics. What narcotics will do is they'll slow down respirations and heart rates in an overdose situation to the point where people simply stop breathing and expire. And so this is a wonderful tool that the fire department has given us that allows us to... To... Put together just like this, and let me tell you, it's a lot more difficult to do it when you're under stress, when there's somebody who overdosed in front of you. But we obviously get to a scene a lot faster than anybody else. So once we assemble this, this is designed to go in the nose of the person, and this is such an effective...
So it's a use of this for...
Yes, it's such an effective drug that we just give a couple little squirts in each nostril, and it will immediately reverse the effects of any opiate, and people will literally jump up, come back from the dead almost. So we've used this several times effectively, and it's a great tool, and we're very happy to have it, especially with what I consider the epidemic of heroin use, narcotics use here.
The nice thing about that too is if the officer happens to misguess and it's not opiates, that is the reason why they're out, it won't have any effect on them, so.
Is cocaine not, it's a different family?
Stimulant.
Correct. So, officers, each police car also has one of these kits, it's called an individual patrol officer kit, and it includes combat dressings that can be used in case of a gunshot, it also, gunshot wound, it also includes a tourniquet, which we all carry both individually in these kits. This is the fastest way to stop bleeding from an extremity in the case of a gunshot and some sort of an arterial bleed. So we can, again, respond very quickly and help take care of people. This is called Quick clot, this is actually, an Oregon company makes this, it's made out of shrimp shells that are, they somehow managed to figure out how to stop bleeding really quickly, and so this can be shoved into a wound and will immediately stop bleeding. And this is a thing called a high vent chest seal. Anybody who's been in the military may be familiar with what we call a sucking chest wound. If a lung is penetrated by either a bullet or something else, that lung can collapse and fill with blood and cause pretty quick death. And so what this does is it allows the pressure from inside the chest to come out, but it won't allow air to get back in. So those are just a few of the things that we have, and then of course we have these CPR resuscitation apps, both for children and adults, and this keeps us safe. If we have to give CPR to someone not knowing if they have communicable diseases and things, we can use these and stay safe.
Begin by removing all clothing from the patient's chest. Cut clothing if needed.
I think...
That's how that works.
This, the last one you showed us, this is in addition to chest compressions?
Yes, so...
But I've been hearing from different areas that there's more emphasis today on chest compressions than there is...
That's true.
To mouth-to-mouth.
That's very true. They say that our blood, that the blood that we have in our system actually contains enough oxygen to keep someone going for a while until we can either administer a shock or...
So that's why the chest compressions, to keep that circulating?
That's correct, sir, yes.
Yes, sir.
Tell us about what happened on the ones that you revived or did, and then tell us, you were the chief, how many heroin incidents or opioid incidents, say in the last two to three years?
So the incident that the chief spoke about, we got a call of an overdose at, actually right up here at the Lucky Fortune in the restroom. So myself and two other officers, Officer Sattler and Stone, immediately went there and found the person inside one of the bathroom stalls with needles in his hand, he had injected heroin. He was face down on the floor, blue, as blue as I've ever seen anyone. We could, you know, I'm not smart, but I can tell a heroin overdose when I see one. So we immediately got a Narcan out and were able to get him flipped over and administer the Narcan, and by the time the paramedics got there, he was actually coming too, and I was pretty sure that he probably would have expired had we not been able to use that. So we were really thankful for that. And then as far as your other question, I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that, and I'm sure the chief can agree that...
Begin by removing all clothing from the patient's chest.
Just hold down the green button. It's okay, just hold it down.
Hold it down?
There you go.
Sorry.
It's all right. You didn't shock anybody, so you're okay. There's definitely a huge upswing in heroin use over the last several years. I can't give you exact numbers, but I can tell you that officers from our agency have used Narcan on people on multiple different occasions and likely saved several lives with it.
So the defibrillator, that's actually a real easy machine, if you haven't seen it before, but it just walks it right through the instructions, and we've also had, I guess you could say the fortunate or unfortunate...
Adult man.
Times to use that on a few folks. So we've got those all, we've got them in all of our patrol cars now, which is really a good thing, so, because they do save lives.
The AEDs in all patrol cars?
Yep.
The Narcon?
Every car carries them.
Every car has one of those?
Every officer.
Every officer has one?
Yeah, yeah.
You carry it on your purse?
Yes, sir. I carry mine right here beside my vest.
Next to your heart?
Yes, sir.
And the, for the mouth-to-mouth resuscitation for a vehicle?
These are actually issued to officers individually as well. I keep in mind, we've, I'm sure seen every officer has a, what we call a duty bag that sits in the passenger seat next to us, and that's where I keep mine.
And your other...
Each car has these.
Those the cars have?
Yes.
Very good. You have something else that you have shared a little bragging with the chief?
Do you want to reinforce the award that Corporal Dell Link received?
Yeah, as you know, we had been working at Drug House down on Creekside for quite some time, and Officer Link worked, well Corporal Link now, worked very, very closely with the homeowner and the neighbors there, and we finally, with the help of the homeowner, ended up getting rid of the problem and cleaning up the neighborhood, and that information was sent to the Oregon Police and Peace Officer Association for their review for the distinguished service award, and they reviewed it, and Dell was given the state distinguished service award for his efforts in cleaning up that neighborhood, so, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, is it your intention to issue a congratulatory statement from either yourself and/or the council?
I did.
Good. I did read that, didn't I?
I don't know.
Was it on email?
I did by email.
Yeah, good.
He sent an email to the department, which I forwarded along.
Thank you, and I got your acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions you have for the chief or Officer Cook? Thank you, guys, appreciate it very much.
Counselors, Mr. Mayor, thanks for allowing me to...
Your microphone, your microphone, please. Now start over again.
Counselors, Mr. Mayor, thanks for having me here to discuss some of our preparations. My name's Russ Thomas, I'm the Superintendent of Public Works for the City of Newburgh. Information was sent out, and I'm sure you, a lot had some time to look through it, but I've handed out some handouts, you can follow along a little bit, and some additional information for you that may not have been included. And we're discussing our winter storm preparation that we have. One of the tools that we use in understanding what might happen or what's forecast is weather forecasts, and a couple of the services that we do use is the National Weather Service, there's also the emergency email and wireless network, and this is run, kind of at the same time National Weather Service, it has a lot more information on it as far as some of the other long-range forecasts that they deal with that may not be as easily defined on the National Weather Service. Weather Service can dial a forecast down to a four-square-mile area that they work on, and the emergency emails is a much larger picture that they deal with, we can see what's coming across the Pacific and things like that that we may not be able to see. Storm types that we deal with, obviously we have three during the winter, we have rainstorms, windstorms, and snowstorms. We've had them all individually, and we've had them all together.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Got a minute for just a moment. Where does, and we've had them, that if, it's actually between the rain and the snow, we've had ice events?
We've had ice, ice as well, and we just categorize that in with the snow.
Okay, thank you.
And kind of attack it the same way. Pictures from around town. Rainstorm preparation response in advance, one of the things we do is we go out and clean and check catch basins. This is typically something that's going on late July, August, when there's no rain, making sure that everything is open and available. One of the things we run into is what we call the first flush, you get the first heavy rain, everything goes down, everything backs up, and that's because it just worsens everything down at one time, and once we get that cleared out, then things seem to move fairly easily. Storm outfalls, all of our storm piping in the system has outfalls, and one of the issues that we've dealt with is they either get overgrown or they get covered, whether it's dirt, debris, something of that nature, which causes the pipe to back up, causes the debris, leaves, sticks, trash that's in the storm system to back up and help plug the line. So we try to make sure that all the outfalls are clear. Street sweeping, as anybody's aware, with leaves, the street sweeping helps keep the leaves up and keep the material out of there. One of the issues that we really do face with our storm system is getting silted up, and that's debris that's off the road, it's the fines that go down in there every time we get a little rain, worsens it into the storm system, and we could have an eight or 10 or 12-inch pipe, and it could have two to three, four inches of silt in the bottom of the pipe, which reduces the flow capacity. So street sweeping's key in doing, in dealing with that. Plug storm grates, good example of it right there, in an intersection, simple as leaves. We'll mat over it, we've had paper over it, trash, things like that that we deal with. Storm ditches and grate, storm inlet grates, we've got a number of storm inlets around town, ditches, North College along railroad tracks is one of our larger conveyances that takes a lot of water out of there. They get, when the railroad was active, they would replace ties and pitch them in the barrow ditch, as they call it, next to the railroad right away in the ballast, and block up the ditch, which then ultimately floods local areas and keeps the water from running off. We do have a large vector, we actually have two of them, our old vector, that we use a lot for vacuum excavation in our new vector. When the pipes get blocked, we can vacuum out the catch basins, we have a high-velocity jet that can go up to 3,000 PSI that we use for clearing the pipes, especially the sand and sediment that may get in them. And then sandbag station, and this year, like last year, we've had a sandbag station available at Jakewood Park, thanks to cooperation with CPRD, we place sand up there. This year, we contacted NAPS as a 24-hour supply site to provide sandbags. We really don't have a tremendous flooding issue, it's all localized, individual homes that may have an issue or something of that nature, but at 2:00 in the morning, where do you get your sandbags? And response time for a public works employee that's called in, it could be an hour before we can get sandbags to the people. So NAPS was kind enough to store sandbags in the back in their storeroom. 24, they're open 24 hours, all they got to do is go up and ask one of the clerks if they can get some sandbags, and they will give them the sandbags, the sands at Jakewood Park, which is 24 hours availability, and people are set. All our sandbags are military surplus, we've bought through the state and federal surplus down in Salem. Last year I went down and picked up 6,000 of them, so we have a supply on hand. Right now, the state surplus has about 65,000 sandbags on hand down there, so...
Clarification, the bags are at?
Bags.
NAPS?
The bags.
And the sand is at Jakewood?
Jakewood. We have a secondary sandbag station in our public works yard that's open when we're open, and we have the sand and sandbags and shovels there. We tried putting shovels at Jakewood Park, but they seem to grow legs pretty rapidly. Yeah.
Follow on? Since shovels are a problem, are there devices to where you can pull the lever and it will fill the bag?
They are, they're about, they're about $25,000 to have those available, and one of the issues is overloading people, if it's an individual, it pulls, does them all, it just doesn't one back with those. One of the things that we've done is we've taken cones and cut them down as a scoop and thrown them out there and left them. People don't seem to want to take a traffic cone cut in half.
Like a funnel?
Like a funnel, like a big funnel.
Sure, about easier than a shovel.
Yeah, do it by hand. Windstorms, that's another issue that we deal with, often it's wind and rain together. One of the things we do in preparation is make sure all of our equipment's ready, that we may need backhoes, trucks, chainsaws that we deal with, chainsaws right now, we've got six, they're sitting on the shelf, they're fully fueled, and they are sharp. Every time one goes out, comes back in, gets fueled back up and re-sharpened, so it's a matter, all we got to do is grab them and go. Oftentimes, like in the picture, it's a tree limb that's broken off, or a tree that's down, and we cut it up to get it out of the right of way. It's, emergency access is a primary thing for us. A lot of times they're in wires, and one of the things we ask the citizens not to do, we greatly appreciate their help, but please don't help us with trees that are down in the right of way, because you don't know, and they don't know if there's a wire in it and if the wire's hot or not. And we've actually had some very near misses with citizens in the past, wanting to come out and help us and start cutting up on a very dark rainy stormy night, trees are down, and it's got live power wires in the tree, and stop them just before they got into it with their chainsaw, so. We can take care of it, PG will come by, de-energize it, will clear the tree, and they'll take care of the wires.
Once you buck these up, then what do you do with the wood?
What we do is, if they come off a homeowner's property, we ask them if they want it for firewood. If it is, we put it back on their property. If they don't, then the Friends Woodcutters that have a site out by the Friends Cemetery off Everest will bring it in to our yard, and then we'll buck them up into pieces, and we take them out and deposit them out with the Friends Woodcutters. They will split it, stack it, dry it, and provide it through fish for families that need firewood during the winter. I think over a year, we'll probably take them, the equivalent of five or six cords of wood. Vehicle fuel, we make sure all of our vehicles, loaders, backhoes, everything is fueled up and ready to go, especially checking the weather forecast, we know we've got a storm coming, just in case. We also have 105 gallons of diesel, 105 gallons of gasoline in a truck tank sitting in the yard, should we need that. Yes, sir. Do you have chippers? We have, we have a chipper.
And in a worst-case scenario, you're sending a chipper out there as well?
We're sending the chipper out to cut up the smaller debris, we can chip down about four or five-inch diameter limb, we'll chip that, we've done that a lot, the wood chips end up CPRD, school district, they have trails or something, we'll pile them up and take them to their trails. If we can't dispose of it, we'll pile them up and hopefully we can give them away. Right now, with the loss of the wood hog fuel burner down at the mill site, we have no place to dispose of woody waste, so it's becoming an issue not just for us, but the school district and CPRD, and we share the chipper with them as well. So then we get into the one that everybody is excited about, and that's winter snowstorms. And again, with our on-call system, we're available 24/7 during snowstorms, kind of an outline of what we do, plowing sand in city streets according to our procedures, and I'll go through a little bit of that here in a minute. Shoveling sand in city facility sidewalks, city hall, library, public safety sidewalk along the fire station are the immediate areas that we deal with, then we'll take a look at Francis Square and the vacant lot across from city hall, and other public areas that we deal with. One of the issues that we've faced a couple of times is taking snow off the roofs, we've got flat roofs, or peak roofs even with what we've got here, and once the snow load gets to a six-inch depth, we've got to get it off, just because of the weight that's up there. One thing with this roof out here, I know people that's been around for a while, when it snows heavy, you'll notice that half a hard street's closed. That's because with the heating and cooling, the snow will actually freeze into a sheet of ice on the roof, break loose and slide off the roof, down onto the sidewalk and the road. A few years ago, they had that incident at McDonald's, and it went through about five windshields that were parked right in front of McDonald's with that. Assisted clearing trees and lines from roadways, whether it's county, we've actually gone up on Shalem Mountain in the past and got ODOT out, they were stuck on the highway, trees down in front and behind them, and they didn't have a chainsaw with them, and they were stuck up there. Also, emergency services, police, fire, they've had issues where trees gone down. Heavy snowfall into evergreens really weighs them down, they'll snap off, tip over, and we've actually had to help them remove them so they could get to people or get somebody out of a building or facility where they've gone down in the past, in dealing with that. One of the handouts that I did give you is the Public Works Maintenance Division, winter snow and sanding procedures and priorities, and on the front, it kind of gives you an outline, I won't go through everything of what we do when we go through that, but as I get to the map in the back, the second page will outline our sanding priorities. Advanced planning, one of the things that we've already done, it's been accomplished, is take a review of our procedures, what we did in the past, what's worked well, what hasn't worked, what we need to do, what do we need to change. Take a look at city facilities, is there a change in the facilities, is there something we need to do a little differently to make them accessible during that? Take a look at our sanding and plow routes and our priorities, has the priorities changed? Has building uses changed? Is there some area that we need to take a look at that we didn't have before, new developments come in with that? Road closure areas, we've got three definite road closure areas that we close when it gets snowy and icy. Villa Road, down through the trestle, we usually end up with a bunch of cars down at the bottom and not very many at the top when it gets really icy, so we immediately close the Villa Road trestle. We try to maintain a route for the residents out of there at the southern end down towards Hayward, but just for safety's sake, we close that area. High T Court in the Greens, if anybody's familiar with the Greens, the loop up through there and by High T Court is extremely treacherous. We've actually taken a truck up, a four-wheel drive truck with chains and slid all the way to the bottom up there, so we closed that street, and again... So we closed that street and again, do the best we can to provide an access for the residents up there one way and maintain it while not maintaining the others. And the residents all know this and they appreciate it. We've had, I've watched cars pinball down the backside off of other cars down there trying to, somebody in a four-wheel drive pick up thought, hey, I can make it. They didn't.
How about Fulton?
Fulton is another one, but one of the things that we work out with, and I've got this on here later, is ODOT will pre-wet it with de-icer and it will help keep Fulton a little better. But we have run into problems with Fulton in the past. The other one is up in the Oaks and we close that street up there for two reasons. One, it gets pretty treacherous. And two, it's a great sledding street. And no matter what we do, the kids will be on that street and just for safety's sake, we close it down. Because we've had kids sled past cars trying to go up and that's really dangerous up there. And the people who live up there are really good about monitoring as well. We've never seen the kids out there without an adult out there monitoring the lower end. But it is what it is. It's snow. Kids love snow. They love to sled and that's a prime hill for it in town. Equipment, we have chains for all the vehicles that we run out. Dual sets of chains, front and back for our four-wheel-drive vehicles and our sanders that we go out. And we also pick up chains. Anybody's gone to Lushwam, got a set of chains, put them in the trunk, never use them, take them back. We do the same thing on some of our vehicles that may or may not need them, but we have them. We've gotten chains for our grader, our backhoe. Hopefully, we never have to get into the point where we need those, but we do have those available should we need them. Sanding material, we have an agreement with ODOT. We use their sand.
Let me come back to that.
Yes, sir.
The chains. And I may be asking the city manager here, how about the service vehicles for our permit center and/or for the administration?
We have your chains. They're sitting on a shelf down in our shop.
Thank you.
Sanding material, we use ODOT sanding material. It's a special sieveed material, kind of equivalent to a quarter ton. Anybody knows the thing about rock. It's doesn't have, it's small, but it doesn't have fines in it, so it makes it easier to spread. We have full access to their facility. I have the keys to get in there, keys to their loader. We use their loader, their sand. All we have to do is keep track of it. We have an agreement with ODOT. We use their sand. We tell you how much we use. A lot of times, their sand in our streets as they go by and we're sanding the highways as we go by.
This is the storage on College?
That's on College Street, up there. And then personnel, we've had a couple of trainings on how to put our snow plows and sanders on, what we do, how we react. If we go into a sanding mode, we have to have rotational basis. Nobody goes out alone. Two people always. It's a safety issue. And we've had one person go out and try to help somebody that's stuck in a ditch and they fall in the ditch. And there's nobody to get them. So we deal with safety issues. And then finally, snow removal sites. We've only gotten into this twice since I've been here in 37 years. We need to have someplace to take it if we gotta move it. So we've gotten some sites that we have. That's on the second sheet down towards the bottom on the back. We have snow dump sites. We have on the east end of town, the roundabout out by Hayes, there's the storm detention facility. It's a field that we can back up and put it in. Springer and Cedar, that's out by Fire Station 21 in the little triangle area. We can pile up a lot of that. And Otis Springs at the base of Rex Hill. Center of town, down on 14th Street off of River Road, it's the old city property. Our dump site, we can dump there. Wastewater Treatment Plant in the pipe storage jar, we call it the boneyard out back. There's lots of room there. And then Washington and 4th Street, the vacant lot. And we've piled snow up on that lot as well if we need to. North side of town, between Mountain View and Crestview Drive, we use that north corner there. It drains into the field and it works pretty well. And then Jakewood Park, the parking lots. And anybody's been around, we've had a snow mountain out there the last time. We had a pretty good, pretty good snow with that. Equipment that we have, we have two sanders. One is a 1980 Henderson Chief. They're both two yards. The Henderson Chief, last year, we, last time it snowed, we kept it running with bubble gum and baling wire. Took parts off of anything we could get, parts that wouldn't keep it running and kept it running. I think we were down about an hour at the most and we ran that thing for 36 hours straight. Engine's no longer made. Most of the parts are no longer made. Guys did a great job band-aiding it back together. We've got it operational, but it's at the end of life. And we'll run it until it dies if we need to. The other one is a brand-new Meyer two-yard sander. It's in the back of the truck you see in the picture. Stainless steel hopper. It's Honda engine, latest and greatest. Plows, we've got two Meyer eight-foot plows. One's on the front of this truck and we've got another one on the front of the three-quarter-ton truck. And as I mentioned earlier, we've gone through a couple evolutions of practice, putting them on, taking them off. A couple guys can do it in five minutes. And we'll just continue in that mode because we don't know who's going to get called at what time and may need to put them on there. An interesting note is Meyer Corporations in Newburgh, New York.
Any you, any you, Bert?
Any you, Bert.
Any you, Bert.
And they have a Mrs. McGillicuddy on 19th Street that has called me three times wanting me to plow her street. I don't know how she got my number, but she keeps calling me back. This new truck is a four-wheel drive. This is one we picked up last year. It's got a universal dump box. The sides drop down. It's all wired for the sander that's in the back of it. We also have vehicle chains, heavy-duty chains for these. Anybody that's gone over the past, has seen the trucks running, chains front and back. We've got chains front and back for this to deal with. And additionally, we've got our two backhoes, two five-year dump trucks and one 10-year dump truck should we need to move snow for any reason. As I mentioned earlier, we've got the agreement with ODOT. That's their loader at their rock pile and we're loading our truck with it. We share the rock. ODOT has mag chloride tank, a 10,000-gallon tank at their facility that they use in the area for pre-wetting. What it does is it raises the freezing temperature of the ground and helps prevent black ice from forming. And you'll see little strips of line going down the road when it's kind of dry and that's exactly what they've done on there. ODOT sands and plows all the state highways. The city, we have an agreement with ODOT. If they come through town, they're not stopping for the side streets. They're just going to plow it off to the sides. And every cross street will get plowed in. We'll go behind them with our backhoes and open them back up and we'll just push onto a corner with that. One of the misunderstandings we've had in the past is we didn't know that you had to ask ODOT to plow a state highway through a city. They would stop at the sea limits. And so we had to ask them to plow. Okay, they'll plow through. And that was just something that's in their policy and procedures that we didn't know until we asked them. And now we've got a standing request. If it snows and you plow, plow through the city. City sands and plows the city streets. Here's a sanding zone map that we have. They're color-coordinated or coded on there. We've got several routes identified. We've got a red zone, which is basically our emergency services area that's around public safety, the fire stations, the hospital to provide the emergency services access to that. Blue zone is access to our schools. Should they be schools? We're going to make sure it's plowed and sanded if necessary. If there's no schools, blue zone goes to the end of the list to work on that. And then we've got four other zones that we work through town in sections. You see the orange up in the northwest corner, yellow zone, canyon in the southwest, orange zone, red zone is emergency services. So we hit all the main arterials to provide access to that. That's pretty time-consuming. So we're into, if we're doing this, we're into day three before we can get a real good handle on it if the snow stops and then start moving into the neighborhoods. One of the focuses that we do work on is the areas of the greens out near the trestle and Villa Road to get those open sooner because it is a high-traffic area. And there are a lot of residents that are relying on that and of course, the Oak Knoll area that we work with. The big map that I gave everybody, and it's not, wasn't in your packet, is the Oregon Department of Transportation winter levels of service. And what this map depicts is where ODOT is going to focus their forces should we have a significant snow event. And they're listed level service A, B, C. A gets everything first, which means if I-5 or 84 is snowed in and transportation can't move down that road, and I forget how many millions of dollars a day they say it is, they're going to divert everything they can to get I-5 and 84 back open and running. That means any snow plows in northwest Oregon are going to I-5. So there may be a couple of days that, and it's happened in the past, that we do not have support. Once they get that taken care of, then they'll move to the level service B roads. Then they go to C, D, and E. Typically, you won't see them touch E-level roads. The smaller map, I've blown up so you can see where we are. And their A service stops at Sherwood in the Portland metro area. And we're B level. And we've seen the snow plows and the, and ODOT's forces get pulled out of Yammy Hill County and sent to I-5. And if you've ever been out there when they've had a significant snowfall on I-5, you'll see a train of trucks going down the road, one stacked after another to clear it. And they'll, the Newburgh area folks typically get detailed, the area Woodburn to Salem. And they clean that section back and forth. The Salem folks go to Albany. The Albany folks go to Eugene. They move down the line until they run out of snow. Portland will not come any farther south. As soon as that's done, then they'll redetail them back out to the B level, which 99 is. So as soon as I-5, 84, and all the red zones done, they will hit 99. There's 99W and 99E get equal treatment because it's a secondary road north and south off I-5. The second part is it connects to 18, 26, 18, and 6 are the major arterials going to the coast. So they will work on getting those opened up. But you can see here by looking at it that the level C service is 240, 219. Typically, they won't touch it until everything else is done on those. So that gives you an idea with the maps of where, what ODOT's priorities are in dealing with this. Few pictures from around town, the old sander, the last snowstorm running downtown. Villa Road with our backhoe out there, again, trying to get it opened up down to the trestle. We close the street, we leave, somebody moves the sign and decides they want to go four-wheeling down the road and then they end up sideways down in the bottom. And it's a treacherous thing, so we try to keep that from happening. And one of the things is out there scraping it. The other picture is out off of Hayward. Again, the snow load on the trees just takes a tree down. And those trees, normally, you wouldn't even see those in the picture because the limbs are hanging so low. Using a backhoe and chainsaw to clear it off. And the other picture is about eight years ago when we had to clear the roof off the public safety building. We had about nine inches of snow on the roof.
Mr. Ray?
Go ahead.
So in my neighborhood, I live up on Oak Knoll, when we had that windstorm and you just mentioned trees and snow load, we had a number of neighbors who didn't have trees go down, but they were leaning pretty good.
Right.
What kind of support do you give to residents who, what I saw is a lot of people putting sawhorses out and basically saying, you know, don't park here because this tree might fall over.
Right.
In the end, they didn't and we had some people upset contacting me and some other people in the neighborhood, the homeowners association about, you know, can we put up these temporary signs? How do you handle when you see a tree, either with a snow load or during a windstorm, that's starting to tip from a, you know, a small neighborhood street tree to the big monster ones?
We do what we can. A lot of times, nobody calls us. We don't find out about it until it's after the fact. We'll take sawhorses out. We'll do what we can. If we're in a situation like a winter storm and we have limited resources, we're running 24/7, half our crew is off sleeping because they're going to be coming back in. But we'll handle it as best we can. We'll give them ribbon. We've got barrier tape. We've got cones. If it's a hazard, put something out to protect somebody from getting underneath it and getting hurt. We have no problem with anybody doing that. We'll do what we can to help them out with that.
Follow on?
Follow on.
And the nice part was nobody was critical of the city in that situation. They were mostly critical of their neighbors. So just to clarify.
Yeah, we try to do whatever we can to help them out. In the handout I gave you, and it's not in here, there's several additional pages in the back of what an individual can do to prepare for winter storms. This is kind of an overview of it, what to have on hand. But in the back, there's several pages and these pages are being put up on the city's webpage in the maintenance section on our winter storm preparedness. So we're providing that information on our website for individuals to give them ideas, what they need to do. You know, there's people that, medicine's critical for them. We have a severe snowstorm. They're getting low on medicines. You know, most of our pharmacies around here are very good about getting somebody in to do that, provide the needed medicines. But people need to be prepared. They may be stuck at home and not able to get out. So it's tell them, you know, have that, flashlights, blankets, whatever they may need to prepare for that. So there's several pages in here. You can take a moment and take a look at that and see the information. That's the majority of the information I have for you. One other thing that we got over here, though, Vanna? Vanna?
I have a question.
In the last, in the last four years, we've had four employee injuries slipping on ice and snow. Two meniscus, tears, one ACL, and a couple of really bruised-up knees and hips. So what we picked up is some of these snow tracks are fairly inexpensive from Costco of all places. There might still be some there. They were going out the door pretty much like wildfire. They just slip over your shoes and it provides you traction on ice and snow and to be able to get out and about. We've got these for all of our employees. So we brought some in. And I've got to box them over here for everybody to grab your size because we don't want you falling down. But it's an added safety measure that we provide for the employees. And everybody can wear snow boots and good, heavy-duty boots. But when you're on ice, I don't care what kind of boots you got, if you don't have some kind of traction on you, it's really tough to stay up. So this is an added thing that we help provide with that.
There's two in.
And with that, that's what I had to present tonight to give you a better understanding of what we've done and what we're doing should we have a snow vent. If you haven't been paying attention to the National Weather Service, they are predicting significant snow vent in the valley floor four times this winter, not once, four times, which is pretty unusual. And in what the National Weather Service says, there's a better-than-average chance, which means they're thinking this is going to happen.
Councilor Bacon, Councilor McKenney.
You kind of answered one of my questions because I used to go to that meeting as well. Did they talk about temperature at all?
Hmm?
Did they talk about temperature at all?
They're talking, they're talking about sub-zero temperature in February. If everything does what it's supposed to do north of Alaska in that area, there's potential for a sub-zero event in the northwest. They're actually predicting significant snowfall in Seattle. And if anybody's ever been in Seattle, that's really unheard of, of the bay up there.
Councilor McKenney?
Russ, are we aware of vendors to where we could locate go bags? Uh, Russ, are we aware of vendors to where we could locate go, go-bags and make them available at a retail cost to people within the city limits who need to buy a, a kit? Are, is, are there kits available?
There, there's a whole bunch of vendors that put out different variety types of preparation bags, uh, at numerous levels. We can, uh, research that and also include that information on our webpage to provide that for people, uh, to do that. But for, I, I don't know if we could buy enough bags and, and coop our expenses to provide it to the public not knowing, you know, what it would be for them and the different types of bags because depending on individual circumstance, they need to be prepared in different ways.
Yeah. But this is the second time now that it's come up recently. We've got the earthquake that we want to be prepared for and this. But lots of people don't do it because they don't, they don't know what to put in them and if it's, if it's made convenient or whatever.
And that, and that's part of the information.
Is that something we could take orders for and begin to help facilitate that?
Uh, that's something we can take a look at.
Thank you. Councilor Woodruff.
Oh, thank you. Uh, you know, I was just thinking, um, how often do you sweep the streets? Like, how, so my street, how often does it get?
Uh, most streets are swept every four to six weeks, depending on location. We have a street sweeping schedule January through October, November, December. We don't have a schedule simply because we're trying to catch up with the leaves and the storm that's on there and that. The schedule's also posted on our website.
Follow on. Councilor Johnson. I live in Oak Knoll and being a city council from Oak Knoll, street trees are my life. Um, the other.
We may change that.
Conflict, yeah. Can we just, anyway, um, the other conflict I hear a lot about is people raking leaves into the street into the right-of-way.
Yes.
Does that gum up the street sweeper? Are you the definitive?
If they pile it up deep enough, we have to make several passes to get to it and sometimes it plugs it up. Uh, with that, it also provides a hazard in the street should a car hit it, they're slippery or plug up a, uh, you know.
Storm drain.
Storm drain and, and cause the backup on all property.
But you'd prefer people not rake their?
Sweep them in the street all you want, just clean them up when you get, when you get done.
Okay, great, thanks.
Don't sweep them into the drain.
Don't sweep them in the drain.
I find in, in our particular neighborhood, it doesn't, does not hurt for the neighbors to take a broom rake and clean off the storm drain grates.
And we do have a lot of, a lot of people in a lot of neighborhoods that do that. You'd be, you'd be surprised, you get out there and you'll see people soaking wet with a rake or something cleaning off their, their storm grates out there and, and we thank them every time we see them. Uh, but it's hard for us to be everywhere.
Anything else? Thank you, Russ. Good report.
Thank you.
Four events maybe.
Uh, they're predicting four events, one significant.
All right. Anything else to come before us in, um, work session?
Winzer buffet.
Winzer buffet? I will entertain and I'm going to close up work session. I'm not even going to entertain anything. We're going to close the work session. We'll be at ease until approximately 7:07.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what to do if you're not careful. Just a minute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Newburgh City Council's Business Session, November twenty-one, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted.
Please rise for a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to invite Cheryl Kelch to the table and give us a presentation on the Quarterly Report for Shehalim Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors and staff. My name is Cheryl Kelch with the Shehalim Valley Chamber of Commerce. And you have a copy of my Quarterly Report for fiscal year first quarter in front of you. I have a few comments to add, and then I'll open it up for questions. The first thing that I wanted to report on is that the Willamette Valley received a very amazing award from the Wine Enthusiast. The Willamette Valley was named the number-one wine regri- region in the world by Wine Enthusiast for two thousand and sixteen. So there's a lot of media attention that will be placed on this area, and we're going to play it up the best we can. But I expect we're going to receive a number of visitors as a result of that. The visitor sitter move is complete. Thank you to the mayor and the councilors that were able to attend that on Friday, as well as staff. We had the ribbon-cutting Friday, and we're pretty comfortable. And visitors are finding us. We are working with Tim Potter at ODOT to get our wayfinding signs in place. We have our lighted signs on the building, as well as on Highway ninety-nine. Those are working well. We're getting comments from visitors that they're able to find us. But we've had three wayfinding signs, both coming into Newburgh and then leaving, or from Dundee, as well as coming in from Portland, and those have to be moved by ODOT. And so we've been working with them since September. Tim's helping us with that. So as soon as those are in place, we'll be in good shape. We are focused right now on preparation for the Oregon Truffle Festival in January. The chamber has taken an increased role in that particular festival. Right now, I have a staff member who's dedicated to working with the vendors of the Sunday Marketplace, and that, for those of you that have attended, attracts about seven to eight hundred people into the area. And then we're also working with the Oregon Truffle Festival PR agency to secure Irene Edwards, who is the editor-in-chief of Sunset Magazine, to attend. So we don't have that confirmed, but again, we're working alongside them to see if we can lure her to the festival this year. We are also in the middle of assisting the Camellia Festival with their event that's coming in April. The reservations are now being accepted, and Martha with the Camellia Festival is forwarding those reservations to me, so we can follow up with invitations to those people to hopefully book a longer stay. So we're sending them packets on the area and hoping that they will stay, spend a little bit longer than just the weekend for the American Camellia Festival. I recently participated in a listening session with the CEO of Travel Oregon. That was in October thirteenth, in Youngburg Hill, and Todd was here to listen to those that participated on feedback on the challenges we face here in Yamhill County, being unfunded as a county overall. We don't have, there's Travel Yamhill Valley, but it's an unfunded agency. So he was really interested in hearing what some of those challenges are. And then I also participated in a marketing roundtable led by the Willamette Valley Wineries Association earlier this month. And again, sort of along the same lines, Yamhill County is a little bit challenged because all of the counties in the rest of the state have some sort of tourism funding in place for a county-wide tourism entity, and so we're sort of an anomaly in that because we don't. And then I did an interview with Oregon Business Magazine last week for an article that they're going to publish, I believe it's the January edition, on workforce development. And it was specifically about the training in the hospitality industry. And so we focused the interview on the work that we've done on the Oregon Wine Education Center and the fact that we've trained over a hundred people in the last year on hospitality skills. So watch for that. I'll get you all copies when that comes out, if I like the article, that is. And then this morning, I was invited to participate in a focus group made up of destination marketing professionals with Wyden &amp; Kennedy. Wyden &amp; Kennedy is the advertising agency that Travel Oregon has used for the last many years, and they are embarking on a rebranding project that we should probably see something next spring or summer on a brand-new brand for Travel Oregon. And lastly, I was just going to mention that I'm working with Travel Salem, as well as Travel Yamhill Valley, on a project that's funded by the Wine Country License Plate Dollars, and it will be a Wine Charm Trail. And so visitors will get a passport, and if they visit a certain number of wineries, we're keeping it very small, then they can get a wine charm at different destinations. We are, as a visitor center, going to be one of those destinations, and we'll have a featured wine charm for Newburgh for visitors. And I'll keep you posted. As soon as I get that design approved. But that's sort of what's going on right now, and I would open it up to any questions you might have.
I don't have a question, but you could put Josh and I down to do the vendors again this year. We had such a good time.
Okay, all right. Love it.
On the budget review that we have before us, I was going down through there, and I noticed that the overhead and utility expense was significantly greater. Is that the result of the move?
Yes.
Thank you. That makes sense? Any other questions or comments for Cheryl at this time? Thank you for the report. Good report.
Okay.
I like that.
Thank you.
It's a charming report that you had.
Oh, dear.
You say what? City manager's report?
Mayor and council, Joe Hen, city manager. Several things. First, we met with the CPRD staff, Doug and I did, to develop an agreement related to SDCs and fees that would allow the district to pick up their permits so that they could go down the road with construction and not be subject to any more inflationary costs that came up. And with the help of the city attorney, we came up for a draft agreement that we know ultimately would have to be ratified by council, but I've got the authority that you and ORS has given it to sign to get them down the road. They are still working, turning in some more information, but they were appreciative of that, and we expect that sometime in the next couple of days, hopefully, they come in and sign that and go forward with it. Also, that I passed to you, and I think we passed to the press, that what I expect to bring to you next council meeting is to fulfill their request, it's not to forgive fees, or they're comfortable with it, but to defer their fees, both SDCs and building fees, until occupancy. Now, they're going to be motivated to get the pool open as soon as they can, particularly if they have George Fox's swimming teams that are wanting to go in there and compete. So we expect it somewhere between one year and eighteen months. And then at that time, we would get our SDCs. In the meantime, we're also seeing, and both the same things we used to project our SDCs, we've shared with them, and we expect that during that time, the SDCs that they will collect for parks will be able to meet that fees. So that part was, I think, mutually a win-win for each of us. Then we also talked about the whole concept of investing in kids and different programs. I asked that if we ever have this in the future, I won't build another pool for twenty-five years, but that if both of our agencies go to the elected bodies earlier in the process, it would make for, I think, much more smoother and kind of more thoughtful discussion about each of those bodies' priorities, whether it's the city or CPRD. And so we agreed we would try to do that. But we found a couple of places that are win-win for us right now, and we said, look, let's use, in our case, projects that we do in our utilities, like water and wastewater. If we're doing a project, and it can line up with something that they would like to do, like trails, then by us doing our project, either becoming a match towards other grant monies, or just fit into their line, the community benefits, because a trail can be open, and we can still do what we need to do for the utilities. To the jump out, one of them is exploring, going down Hess Creek, because, and going from Hess Creek towards Winawski and towards the river, that we have some sewer manholes there that we need to take care of. So it's too, in our interest, to try to get a roadway down there, that we can get our vehicles to maintain the manholes. Well, in that process, if it connects and helps with a link and becomes like matching monies for them to go to state parks for the neighborhood grant program, then it's a win. And the other one, we still have to work out the details, but we know that Jay is very good at helping us do this, that we look at the Dayton pump station. And there's a small, but treacherous, you know, a high grade there of connecting Ewing Park with Dayton. But if we can make that connection as part of some access trail slash road for our pump station, then we can link their trail, and the public gets to go right off Dayton, go all the way to the park. So that would be a big win, and that's what we committed to work on. Also, separately, and this was at the district's, so it was at CPRD's actually request, Doug and I met with Don Clements today to work on a mutually agreeable agreement, and I'm sorry, and Jay Harris was there, too, on use of the reuse water. So we spent today a little over an hour and a half, and we made good progress, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring you something by the next time that you get together in two weeks. That's our goal, ideally. Also met with CS Lewis Academy. Doug didn't, Doug's our lead in all these. I kind of be there and try to be the, you know, the cheerleader for Doug, and looking at him to say, make sure you don't commit anything to the city, from the city. But on this case, it was meeting with CS Lewis Academy, because they publicly have announced that they're exploring their options of selling their property. And just where it is at, both, it's a historic building, so there's obviously a desire to keep historic buildings, but it's also, but in addition to that, it's in a residential area, and there may be some very interesting options for housing with different partners. So we heard what they're thinking about. I think we know what they're looking for, and so we'll try to connect other partners, particularly all the people that have been on the Housing Committee, that have been looking at. So it's some bankers, some developers, and see how we can do something positive on that side. Doug and I also met with Barry Noir over the last two weeks, and this was exploring reuse water there and other agricultural uses along the Wilsonville Road. So this fits with what we had committed even when we started the reuse, to find other customers. So we're reaching out there and asking for their help of helping us find other users in an area where we can extend lines at minimal cost. And that was at least a positive conversation, but nothing come out of that yet. Worked as a volunteer ballot collector for the last election, so two of us came from McMinnville. Back to Newburgh to pick up our ballots right outside this room and take them back. And so that was a real interesting thing, and I encourage everyone to volunteer for that, because they always need help with that. Doug and I also met with Brian at the Cameo Theater, and this is to, and Steve Olson, who's here tonight also. And this all fits with the theme that you're going to hear later tonight, but that one was specifically to ask him, are you interested in a partnership of applying for a national historic designation of the theater? So we're expecting a, you know, his decision back here within a week or so. But we talked about staff support and of actually helping to apply for grant funds. There is some cost, and we told him about that, but we think that it's, could benefit him and us, both in the tourism side, protecting a historic resource, and also in some of the tax benefits that come when you have a historic building for some of the rehabs. We also met with George Fox and some historical society members. So I know our Historical Society Commission Chair is here, but we're also looking at different kinds of fundraising programs that could be everything from printing historic cards, printing historic photos, and charging with a slight premium on that, and then dedicating all those funds into a historic preservation fund to pay for things like this, or what you'll hear later tonight about preserving, you know, unique historical artifacts in our sidewalks. So it's about getting other funds than what the city just has. We also met with the staff to work on an annual employee recognition program, which is in two thousand and seventeen, and we met with Public Works to talk about a limited sidewalk proposal that we anticipate bringing to you the first meeting in January. But we'll share it with Councilmember Woodruff before we go, in case she would like to have comments about it. Then we also attended the Economic Vitality Summit at the Shehalim Center. We now worked on some revised cost estimates and tower options for dispatch with WACA staff. The good news is, is we believe, which is why it was not on the study session tonight, is that we've got another two- or three-month window, try to work through the particulars. We've been working with Mobile IT and Verizon, some others, try to come up with some tower options to reduce the cost. Those haven't gone particularly well, so we're still working on that. But that leads also to a discussion about Wi-Fi. And as you're aware, for probably a year, we've been looking at different options about doing Wi-Fi in three different settings. One is on our Public Works facilities, like the reservoirs, that we'd like to have line of sight from a large tower that could then allow us to replace radio interaction or integration with the towers with a Wi-Fi signal. And that needs a tall tower. So we've looked at this Mobile IT who wants to put a tower in town, that that could be a real option. We believe that will work. Tried to see if dispatch could go on it. That does not appear to work to the standards that WACA has. But we also have looked at two other ones. One is just a community-wide effort, and this is the schools that we know that by the end of next year, the goal is that each child will have a device that is Wi-Fi enabled as part of their education program. So we're looking that when a vendor, such as Mobile IT, comes in, and they're issued either a license in a right-of-way or maybe in the past times of franchise, to say, we would like you to provide free Wi-Fi for the schools. First go around, they said, no, we couldn't do it. And then when they see the advantage of working from the city and maybe not going through some little more extensive land-use decisions that would be required if they were on private land, then they said, well, we're going to work with possibly free Wi-Fi. Attended the mayor's cabinet. We had our first meeting with the union representatives and the police contract two thousand and seventeen. We discussed new alternatives to try to help out the police association. They've had some change in people, and so we're trying to keep them still vital, but be able to continue that program for years and years, because reserves do some tremendous things for the city and save the community a lot of money. And attended the Parkway Committee, and then in your inbox, you'll see the manager update. Mr. Mayor.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? I do have one, if I may. You were mentioning the pool, and they now have the fencing up around the Bay Booth Park. What's going to be the status of parking on Hayworth?
Doug Rux, Community Development Director. There's going to be some activity starting, hopefully, soon. So first, you're going to see the trees coming down. So there probably will be some closure of parking on Hayworth at the time that they are cutting down trees. There are some trees that need to be removed along Hayworth in order to be able to install a sidewalk. In the long term, the parking on Hayworth will go away. It will become a bike lane. But through the land-use process, we also talked to them, the three to four times a year that they have the large swim events at the facility, is that they could come to the city and apply for a permit to be able to park and use Hayworth during those large events. With the project, based upon the normal operations of the pool, there will be adequate parking onsite to accommodate all the patrons that would go there, except for that three to four times a year, when there'd be some overflow. In addition, CPRD has worked with the school district in order to be able to park motorhomes and so forth during those large events off-site. And CPRD is going to require that the schools that attend those meets, that their buses have to park down at the high school as well, and then they've got their own vans, and so they could be able to shuttle people back and forth. So that's kind of this overall parking management. But in the long term, parking will go away on the south side of Hayworth as part of the pool project.
Thank you. Anything else for the city manager and/or Mr. Rux? Thank you very much. With that, we will move to public comments. But before we go into public comments, I wanted to let the audience know that on the consent calendar, we are pulling the item dealing with the request to purchase vehicles off the consent calendar, and that will be added to council business under, or council activity under new business. So with that, I'd like to move into the area of public comments. I have one individual that would like to address us at this time. I remind that person that the public comments can, please confine your remarks to a period of five minutes, and we will then proceed on that. And I'm calling for Rebecca Wallace. Am I correct? Come forward. If you push the silver button on the right, that will turn on the mic. Identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rebecca Wallace, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Newburgh Dundee Police Foundation. It's a new organization. We are in the beginning stages of the implementation of the Newburgh Dundee Police Foundation. We will be seeking an audience with the chief of police, whom has agreed to be an ex officio, to discuss issues and topics that he would like to see worked on as a community, to strengthen the bond between the community and our police force. We will be looking to him to help give us guidance on what direction the department would like to see us take. We're also calling on individuals and businesses and business owners, as we need more committed and enthusiastic board members to join the team. The organization has been registered with the state, and the 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status has been applied for already. That's all I have to say.
Say their name again, please. The name again, please.
Newburgh Dundee Police Foundation.
Councilor Bacon?
I just wanted you to know that I am on the board of this as well. And we have reached out to some business owners already that have kind of agreed, to be honest.
Councilor McKinney?
Is there a stated purpose or goal for the foundation?
Our goal for the foundation is to help fill gaps in the budgets that the police department has.
Councilor Johnson?
Would those gaps include things like funding canine dog training, or?
Yes.
AEDs for police cars? I'm just throwing out some ideas.
It would be pretty much anything that the department expresses that they need, whether it's equipment, body equipment, vehicles, vehicle maintenance, and of course, police canine teams, a new team they need for next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any further comments? Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Good luck on your new venture.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move into the consent calendar. Remember, there's only one item on the consent calendar. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move the consent calendar as amended.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, which is the, now is simply the minutes, as corrected. Is there any further discussion? The question has been called for. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the consent calendar is adopted. And with that, we're going to move into a public hearing. And this is a legislative hearing, dealing with the repeal of Newburgh Municipal Code nine point one zero point zero one zero and nine point zero one zero point zero two zero. It is a repeal of an ordinance regarding the possession of less than one ounce, you pronounce it, ounce of marijuana, less than one. Would somebody do the French for me? City attorney?
I did. Truman Stone City Attorney. I did take French in high school, but that was more than a couple of years ago. I think it's.
Avois du poids.
Thank you.
Say what? Does that translate to ounce?
That is the term that's currently in the code and also in state law.
All right. So proceed. You're covering for.
I am. This, in fact, Jean Choubac.
Let me back up before you continue. Shame on me. This is a legislative hearing, and that's what it's for, one something or other. I cannot do it. Ounce of marijuana, my apology. So I'm going to call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to jurisdiction. We are in a legislative hearing. None appearing? Now proceed with the staff report, please.
Thank you again. Truman Stone City Attorney. Jean Choubac did assist in preparation of this. Unfortunately, she was unable to come tonight due to her husband's work schedule and having to be home with her children. So it's back on me. As the council is well aware, we've spent a lot of time dealing with marijuana issues over the past few years. With the passage of Measure ninety-one, the Oregon State Statute that created an offense of possession of less than one ounce of marijuana, which was a noncriminal offense, it was a violation or equivalent of like a traffic ticket, was repealed. We had similar provisions in the municipal code, that one section created the municipal offense of possession of less than an ounce of marijuana. And then the following section created an exemption for those holding a medical marijuana card. So the ordinance before you tonight repeals both the prohibition of possession of less than an ounce of marijuana, which we need to do to bring our municipal code in line with state law. with state law, and also repeals the exemption that no longer is necessary. So those are the two provisions that are contained in this ordinance.
Questions of staff? You are looking at ordinance 2016-2812. This is a first reading. No further questions. We have nobody at this time that wants to provide any public comments, so I'm going to open and close the public comment on this particular legislative session. And any closing remarks that you have?
Well, again, this is necessary to bring the municipal code in line with current state law. It's something that we aren't currently enforcing in any event because it's been preempted. So I recommend the council adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff at this time? Counselor Essen?
The only question I have is this is state law. Now, with federal law, how do those two interact?
That's, if I understand your question, so the city can, is free to regulate or legislate within the bounds of the city unless there's been preemption by the state on certain topics. And preemption's a very difficult and detailed body of law. So there, it'd be a long explanation about preemption. But in this case, the city cannot criminalize something that the state permits, and the, and likewise, the city cannot allow something that's criminalized by the state under general rules of preemption. Now, the state and the federal government's relationship is similar, and the federal government has preemptive power over state law in certain areas. As, as we all are aware, the federal government still considers marijuana a, I think it's Schedule I drug, meaning that it's still illegal under federal law. But I don't, I don't think that has a direct effect under what we're doing or what we're proposing to do here tonight to bring our municipal code in line with state law, to the extent that state law is preempted. Then it would reinstitute that offense at the state level, and really, our municipal code's kind of duplicative in any event.
Follow on? Follow on?
I've done some research on this, and my understanding is even if the federal law wants to preempt the state law, they have a problem. And even doing that, but I, I didn't really delve into it any further than that, but I just wanted to say that I think we're very well within our means, what we need to do in passing this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond to that?
You may.
It's something to keep an eye on, and I think, given the new administration coming in, having a less friendly attitude towards marijuana, it's something that, again, kind of keep an eye on and see how that affects this experiment that the state of Oregon is engaged in. That being said, there's only so much we can do at a city, city level, and, and what happens at the state and federal level, we'll just have to adapt to. But again, I think having something in our code that's prohibiting something that's currently allowed in state law is something that we can't enforce, and the best practice is to remove from our municipal code.
Any others? Counselor Johnson?
So, Mr. Stone, even with the new administration, if they start cracking down, let's say, things get reversed, we would basically have to bring this back, wouldn't we?
Not necessarily. Because again, so this is, there's a lot of things that are, we have in, in the state level, in the Oregon Revised Statutes, that we have parallel prohibitions in our municipal code. There, sometimes there's a reason to do it that way. But even if we didn't have those parallel provisions in the municipal code, you can always be cited under the state statute. So for instance, if we say, if the state says driving 35 in a 25 zone is a class two infraction, and the city has a municipal code provision that says the exact same thing, it's really duplicating something that already exists. And so even if you did not have that in your municipal code, you still, the officer would still cite him under the state statute.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Counselor Bacon?
I was going to make a motion.
To?
Waive the second reading.
All right. This is, in order to proceed further, are we through with any questions of staff at this time? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move into deliberations. Counselor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Second? Been moved and seconded to waive the second reading. Is there any further discussion? Question has been called for. The question before us is to waive the second reading. We have a provision for two readings on ordinances unless we waive the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. We have adopted, we have waived the second reading to the, to the ordinance. Counselor Essen?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 2016-2812.
And read by title only?
And read by title only.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance 2016-2812, and read by title only. City Attorney?
Ordinance Number 2016-2812. An ordinance repealing Newburgh Municipal Code, NMC 9.10.010 and 9.10.020 regarding possession of less than one oude-oude ounce of marijuana and a medical exception to the prohibition of possession of less than an ounce.
It's a roll call vote. City Recorder?
Counselor McKinney?
I had a question for the city attorney, Mr. Mayor. But before the motion was made.
I did not see your light. My apology.
I don't know how to vote yet.
Go ahead with your question. We'll defer the vote. Your mic, please.
There are these parallel actions between state and federal law. The federal law, at the particular time, seems to let the experiment of Measure 91 proceed, but it does not preclude, preclude the feds from taking action against marijuana. Is that a correct assumption or an incorrect assumption?
Counselor McKinney, I think that's a correct assumption. They, well, the feds still are taking certain prosecutorial steps towards certain people in, in the marijuana field, I guess. You know, the people that are outside the compliance with state law, for instance. And so, or crimes that occur on, on federal land, federal territory, that sort of thing. So they, they haven't at any point really completely stepped away from this, but they have, there was a cold memo, as most of you are aware, that the Department of Justice said that, that so long as people were following state law, and state law was a robust regulatory system, that there would be no general federal prosecution for relatively minor marijuana
By choice.
offenses. Yes.
Yeah, the feds by choice. So if you're asking for a vote on reconciling the present ordinances that we've been through and everything else, I'd be inclined to vote yes, with the clear understanding is that the feds can change their mind anytime they want to.
Ready to proceed with the roll call?
I said yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel President Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Corey?
Yes.
Counselor Essen?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. And that was a yes vote for Counselor McKinney. Thank you. All right. With that, we will now proceed to new business. And we have before us a Resolution 2016-3341, which is a resolution supporting the City of All Ages Program through AARP's network of age-friendly communities and the World Health Organization Global Network of age-friendly cities and community programs. And carrying this to it is Mr. Doug Rux. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors Doug Rux, Community Development Director.
Before you get too further, I will remind the council that we do have two people who would like to speak to the, to us regarding this. Continue.
Thank you. So as indicated in your RCA, the World Health Organization has a program that recognizes the age-friendly communities, and so within the state of Oregon, AARP Oregon is the institution that coordinates with the World Health Organization for programs that are occurring within the state of Oregon. And the AARP program is called the Network of Age-Friendly, oh, wait.
It's one of those nights.
Yeah, it's one of those nights, Mayor. In your report, we identified that there were three communities in Oregon, and of course, this report was actually kind of written a couple of weeks ago. And so this evening, we were informed, there's actually 127 communities within the state of Oregon that are partici-
Nationwide.
Nationwide. Okay. That are participating in this program. So, changing things, so bear with me, we'll get through all of this. The ARP network is, you may ask, you know, what is this program? And so what this is really getting at is creating, well, it's a program that helps advance our, our aging population who live in the community to live comfortably in their homes, be socially engaged within the community overall. And there's eight domains that are identified in this program. And so the first one is outdoor spaces and buildings, the second is transportation, then housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, participation in employment, communications and information, then finally, community support and health services. So locally, a task force was created. There are currently five members. Counselor Bacon is one of those members, and I've been working with her on this. And so back in June, this task force pulled together stakeholders within the community. And there were approximately 20 that participated, and each one of the individuals that were identified and participated in this exercise had some relationship to one of these eight domains that I listed. And so we went through and talked about what was occurring in Newburgh, what we see with the assets we have, what do we need to do, who should be involved and engaged in this particular process. And that material summarized in your packet as an attachment, so you can get an idea of some of the feedback that came out of those stakeholders. So to be recognized in this World Health Organization and AR, AARP program, there's coordination, there's an application process to go through. And so there's a draft of the application that's in your packet, so you can see where this task force and based on feedback they've received so far, they would go. So the AARP program itself, it helps the local community through the processes of listening report, and there are five of those. So the first one of these is identifying communities who want to participate and kind of have the cycle of how we make our community better. And so the City for All Ages, as the topic has been, is kind of even broader than just our aging population, because you often see that our aging population and their interactions with the children, and they're in the same type of venues and same locations, but that's bringing people together. Part of the criteria in this process also is looking for local governing body support. And so this is why it's being brought before you this evening. In this, if the council were to adopt this resolution, then the mayor would prepare a letter, or basically, I would draft a letter for the mayor to edit and revise, that would go on and be submitted to AARP along with the resolution, showing the C of Newburgh support for the program overall. Once that process is done, then ARP notifies the World Health Organization, and we get notified if we've been accepted into the program. Once it's kept it into the program, then the real work begins. Then there's the assessment and the evaluation process that needs to be gone through, so that's identified in number three, and that's called the planning phase, and that would take about a year or two. And so it's conducting that comprehensive and inclusive baseline assessment of the community, developing a three-year community-wide action plan based upon the findings from the assessment, identifying indicators to monitor that progress for, so those metrics that you would look at. The second phase is basically occurring in years three to five, and that's really this continuing commitment to advance this program forward. There's a progress report that would have to be submitted, so the task force would prepare that, it would go through a vetting process, and it would get submitted for review. And then in phase three, it's that continual improvement. So every five years, or five years and beyond, doing that, but then there's kind of the reapplication process to go through to show that the community is continuing to move forward. So where we're at right now is at that stage of seeking the City of Newburgh support for this particular program. One of the questions that has come up to me is, what does this mean for staff support and time? So we've indicated here, it's more of participating in it, so it's attending some meetings, could be reviewing data, could be providing data that we already have into this baseline assessment, but it's not really looking at that financial commitment, so it's more of staff resources and time availability to do this, in a sense, it ties into so many things that community development is already working on with transportation and housing, and even outdoor spaces and buildings, because we get involved in all the design review processes and all new buildings that are being constructed. So with that, staff is recommending the city council adopt Resolution 2016-3341.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Corey?
When I, when I read through this, I wasn't entirely clear what this was, but then I read through it again, and it struck me that of the eight things on that list, I think we're already either by citizen-led groups, like the Affordable Housing Group we're, we're working with, or the, the mayor's, you know, different task force on, on transportation, economic development, those types of things. We're already doing these types of things. And what I really like about this program is, you said a magic word for me, metrics. Just the fact that they'll come out and take a look at our community and give us that baseline, I think would be hugely beneficial to us to know, A, the scope of the problem, because as we sit in affordable, or as I sit in Affordable Housing meetings, I still don't after two have a scope of how big is this problem? What's the demand? And I think something like this would be very, very helpful for this community to kind of define where we want to put resources, where we want to, where their problem areas are, and just, just having the baseline alone, I think, would be a major beneficial to this community and benefit to this community. And then you go into phases two and three, and I think it just gets better and better. So that's why I'm, I'm really excited about this. And just as an editorial comment, you know, I, some of the things on this, this eight-section list are no brainers for us, and, and I think that even if we start waiting for them to, to get back to us on this, we definitely need to start talking about transportation, public transportation, and also, you know, the housing situation. Because, you know, we need people to work at wineries, we need people to work at hotels, we need people to work, you know, the skilled trades, and housing in this community is, is, is tough enough to crack right now. So I'm really excited about this. So thank you for whoever brought it forward. And housing in this community is tough enough to crack right now. So I'm really excited about this. So thank you for whoever brought it forward.
Counselor Corey?
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I think this is a worthy program. And I agree that I like where it's headed. The, I think in the future, if there's going to be a financial obligation at all, that we would need to approve that by council, right? Because, and the reason is, the organizations that are listed here, I'm not sure I want to support with taxpayer dollars. So I don't know if that's going to come up or how this is financed. Is it all financed by the federal government, or how does that work?
Counselor Rux?
The, at this juncture, it's not a request for funding. It's staff support and some time commitment to work with the task force in order to work on the baseline assessment information and then do that monitoring over time. If there was an ask for financial, yes, it would come back in front of the council in the Community Development Department budget. We did not budget for this for a financial expenditure that would require coming back to council through a supplemental budget process, which Mr. Zook would bring forward. But that's not the ask at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
It's really what our first steps are, going deep into the community and talking to the citizens about what they feel about these things. And then later, those things can be transferred to plans in the city, transportation plans or or the needs of our public. So it wouldn't be a separate ask for this. But if something came out that we could fix and put into our plans for the future, that's where that's where that information would go into something that we're already doing sidewalks or.
Doug Rux again. And remember, as part of the council priorities, one of those was to go through and catalog all of our master plans and come up with a schedule that we would come back and an opportunity for council to review. So when you think about the downtown improvement plan, we'll be coming in front of you. The transportation system plan will be coming in front of you. We'll be working on a riverfront plan and redoing that. And so information can be gathered, could help plug into those, like the riverfront plan. But when we come back and we look at other plans, we will look at everything comprehensively and all the data and information that's available and say, what tweaks or modifications might we be able to need to make to a particular plan based upon the eight domains that are being evaluated here. So it's another information piece that will be, that could be very beneficial for the community and the city overall.
I have, can I, may I speak at this time to your attachments? Or would you like to delay that? On the, I think, the last page of your attachments, I don't know what your number is, but it's one dealing with communication and information. There is no page number.
It's at page eighty-four, am I?
All right, thank you. I'm just curious, under the column of what we have, it's identified that we have a few computers at the library and we have classes. But I'm wondering about the ability of the city website to be a communication tool and/or the graphic to be a communication tool. And what we need to invite would be maybe media reps and perhaps George Fox University. I'd just throw those out as ideas. And on the membership application, I see you have a draft, but that will be updated when it goes forward if approved.
Correct. It was just a draft to show you what the application form looked like, the questions and the kind of responses that are being prepared.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? With that, Mr. Rux, I would have you vacate and I would invite some of our citizens to come forward and speak to us about this. I remind them as we have these public comments to keep their comments to within a five-minute period. And with that, I'm going to call on Kathy Watson, please. The silver button on the right, give us your name. Oh, you're going to team this, are you?
Dana's going to speak.
Because I have two different applications there.
Okay. I'm Kathy Watson. Thank you, Mayor. Counselors? My colleagues and I are here tonight to ask for the adoption of the resolution in support of Newburgh's application for the, to join the AARP and World Health Organization's Global Network for Age Friendly Communities. The network is an association of communities striving to become a great place for all people to grow up and grow old. There's a growing understanding that a well-designed, livable community promotes health and sustainable economic growth and that they make for a healthier, happier place for residents of all ages, which is why we're calling our initiative the City for All Ages. So why age-friendly? Not only is the older adult cohort getting bigger, it is amassing significantly more purchasing power than any other generation. In two thousand seventeen, nearly half of all U.S. adults will be fifty years or older and will control seventy percent of the country's disposable income. Between two thousand ten and two thousand fifty, there will be a sixty-three percent increase in people aged fifty and over. Baby boomers, people born between nineteen forty-six and sixty-four, will have more than one billion years of good health after the age of sixty-five. That's twelve times more than our grandparents had. We need to be contemplating not only what older adults will be doing with their money, but also what they'll be doing with this additional gift of time. While observing on page three, that this cohort of people with tremendous life experience is settling in Newburgh at slightly higher numbers than the national and state average. So what do older adults want in a community? Well, nearly the same things as families raising children. Additionally, older adults want to be able to live, work, play and serve from their own homes in their chosen community for the balance of their lives. In asking for this resolution, we are asking the City of Newburgh to champion the needs of older adults and the families that care for them each time the city seeks to improve our community in any of those eight livability domains that Doug talked about and also listed on page five. We believe that by doing this, Newburgh will be able to tap into the resources that older adults represent and shape the places that work for everyone across the lifespan, including those whose bodies and brains work differently, making this a more just and desirable environment for everyone. Page six shows that attracting and retaining older adults in our community who might otherwise leave can be an important economic strategy in and of itself. Other examples include in Kansas City, a study that found retaining additional six and additional six hundred older adults for ten years in their region would result in seven thousand more citizens, citizen residents and two thousand six hundred more jobs. Portland State University discovered that older adults bring tourism dollars at a rate of three to four times more money spent than any other cohort. If people with disabilities are included, this potential segment of tourists approaches one-fifth of the population. Moreover, accessibility improvements benefit everyone from pregnant women, children, families and people with disabilities as well as older adults. A two thousand twelve MetLife study highlighted how older adults are important to the fabric of our very society. When, in that sixty-two percent of grandparents provide financial support to grandchildren and thirteen percent provide childcare. Additionally, grandparents provide a key transition of personal values such as community involvement, positive character development and essential life skills. With the support of the City of Newburgh, our task force intends to complete a community-wide livability assessment. Based on our findings, we intend to engage groups and organizations already working on similar issues, the Downtown Association and the Ad Hoc Housing Newburgh Committee, for example, and work together to develop a plan of action that incorporates age-friendliness and livability lenses onto the hopes and dreams and plans that are already taking shape in our community and in public policy going forward. Finally, over a period of time, we will do what our community organically decides what is best for it in order to attract and retain older adults in residence here to the benefit of us all. Thank you.
Deanna Van den Hook?
I get to go. I was, I was like, this is, I've never been here before, sorry, so.
That's fine. You do it well.
So I'm supposed to say, well, thank you, Mayor and counselors for allowing me to be here. Kathy asked me to just share a few examples of things that I've seen here as a citizen and working with her on the City for All Ages initiative. So a couple of things that I've just noticed through the years, I live off of college. And so I've seen older people both on their, like, in their scooters or their electric wheelchairs as well as walking up and down college. And I'm sure you guys are all aware of this and working on that, but that's an area where we don't have a lot of grocery stores. So for example, what we're hoping is, you know, as we're planning new things, we can be thinking about, okay, well, if, how, if you can't drive, is there a grocery store that an older adult could get to and get home with something to eat or those kinds of things? And we're trying to, Kathy and I were talking the other day, and I saw actually this afternoon on my way home, there was a person in a wheelchair, an older adult, in the road, right next to a sidewalk. And I've seen this on a number of occasions, and I'm kind of curious why. Like that, it feels like, oh dear, there's somebody in the road and there's all these cars going by. Like that seems like, there's some things like that that we would love to be able to ask the question to find out from the people living here, what, why are those things happening and how can we address those? Additionally, I have a real passion around, I also work with children with disabilities. And we, every year, we do, we do a big picnic in the park for our families. And we generally have to leave Newburgh to do that because we don't, while I know you guys are not necessarily, I mean, CPRD is great and we have great parks. But there's just some key things that don't work very well with children with disabilities. And we generally either go to McMinnville or Sherwood or Dundee, actually Billet Park. There's a, is the best space for our families who have children with disabilities, largely because kids, these kids sometimes run and you have to have enough room between where the playground is and the road to get to them if they're, if they're taking off. Just, there are just some things that it would be great to have maybe some input and some lenses on. So anyway, thank you. I really appreciate you guys taking a look at this with us. And I think also I want to just reflect to you that in our, the meeting that we had with our, with the other stakeholders, it's that there was a lot of energy around this. There's a, it wasn't just us. It was a wider group from a number of areas. And we had other places that I know people couldn't come on that, on that particular day. And we even have a couple here in the audience just to, so that it's not just a couple of us caring about this, but there is some wide support in our community for this project. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you both. Any questions for the ladies? Counselor McKinney?
Dana, when you were a kid, everything was on the road in Greenleaf, Idaho.
It's true.
And others. Give us an example of who the stakeholders were that you gathered with.
We had, so Justin Harley is a physical therapist who works with older adults in our community. We had people from George Fox, or at least one representative from George Fox. We had, well, Doug was there. You're going to have to help me with the city.
Friends View, Habitat for Humanity.
Cultural Center.
CPRD?
We invited.
Yes, they were invited, but they were not available that evening.
I thought about that in relationship to your parks and, you know, accent there.
And the senior center, of course, they manage the senior center.
Which is excellent here. So that's CPRD.
And we did have some senior citizens also.
Yeah.
I also noted that Kathy, I'm glad you're on this committee, but it seems like you placed some of the blame on Phyllis and Frank Ingalls for escalating the senior population in the City of Newburgh.
Friends View is a good citizen.
Yes. So among people like Friends View and the other older resident establishments, how, in your ministry through Faith in Action and the hospital, at what rate do you think the senior population is growing?
Is growing? It's difficult to say. We're one to two percent higher than the state average. Friends View does contribute to that, but it's not the only reason.
There are other parties to blame as well?
Yeah, there are. It's a nice place to live.
Yeah.
It's a great, it is a great community. And the AARP livability scale, there is a, AARP's website, you can see online already, the eight domains, how we stack up against our neighbors with our livability scale. And we rank, I think, fifty-eight.
Out of?
Not sure what the score is, what the top score is, but compared to our neighbors up and down the ninety-nine West, they are ranking mostly fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. So we're a little bit higher in the livability scale with our eight domains so far.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the ladies? Thank you both for coming forward. Appreciate it. Now you've done it, Deanna.
I'm marking off my bucket list.
Yes, take that off your bucket list. Doug, you may return, please. Any closing remarks?
Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So closing remarks would be the staff would recommend adoption of resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-one.
Pleasure to the council. Counselor Johnson, you going to push your button or not?
Well, I'm just.
Counselor Johnson?
I'm completely unprepared for this. I would move that we pass resolution number two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-one, a resolution supporting the City for All Ages program through AARP's Network of Age Friendly Communities and the World Health Organization Global Network of Age Friendly Cities and Community Programs.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. What do you find the second? Well, I don't know whether certain members of this council should abstain themselves.
Because you're aging?
Because we are the age. Accepted. Oh, for all ages, oh, all ages. All right. Are we off the hook?
I have to pay my water bill.
Oh, you have to pay your water bill too. Okay. Counselor Johnson?
Well, by the time we get this done.
Is that a threat?
No, no, you're the one with the gavel.
All right. You've heard the question. You know that it's seconded. Is there any further discussion? The question has been called for. All in favor of passing resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-one signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing? The resolution is adopted, the motion is passed. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for coming forward. Appreciate it very much. And with that, we are now going to talk about resolution. Where is it? Thirty-three forty-two, two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-two. And this is a resolution directing city staff to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps and other historic markers in the public right of way. And before you start this, I have to ask a question. It's my question, and I want to piggyback on the comment that was made by the city manager earlier talking about historic artifacts. What is the difference between historic markers and historic artifacts? I don't want that answer right immediately, but I want you to make sure that there are some. some concerns that I have that historic markers may not cover some, some things. So, the floor is yours, identify yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, Steve Olson, Community Development Department. So I want to apologize for not including pictures, as I think pictures would, would help explain this resolution tonight. But we're here at the request of the Historic Preservation Commission. They passed a resolution at their last meeting recommending that the council direct city staff to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps and other historic markers in the public right of way. And historic markers was sort of a generic term for other historic elements of the landscape.
A generic term for again, please?
Other historic elements in the landscape. So just starting off, sidewalk stamps, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, in older parts of town, you'll see a sidewalk and it'll be stamped and it'll often have the contractor's name and a date. So it'll say Edmunds nineteen oh two or something like that. But there's other, and that's probably the most visible element a lot of people are familiar with. But there's also things like, there's, we do have some rings where you could tie up horses. There's something, for lack of a better name, we call posts, posts. There's a handful of them around town, they're about three or four feet tall, it's a concrete post and it was essentially a rack that the postman would use to put mailbags on. It must have been part of their distribution system where there would, somebody would come out, wagon, deliver these and then the walkers would go from there. They're not actively used anymore, but they're out there, they're part of the landscape. And so the motivation really for the Preservation Commission is that some of these items are slowly disappearing. And I didn't think this was really tied into other items on the agenda, but, you know, one of the, the good things about our community is it's relatively flat. That's actually quite a big livability issue. I used to live in the hilly part of southwest Portland and, you know, no matter how good the sidewalk was, it didn't really matter, it was steep. So we're blessed with a fairly flat valley floor here, but we have a lot of old sidewalks and so it's great that sidewalks get replaced, but one of the downsides is the sidewalk stamps can just disappear and nobody's intentionally trying to get rid of them, but it just happens sometimes during projects. People don't take an extra step to save them. There's really no requirement to do that right now. So that's, it's part of the landscape, it's part of what makes the town feel historic. We have, on private property, we have historic landmarks for buildings like City Hall or the library. But there's really nothing about items like this in the public right of way. One thing historic preservation commissioners have noticed is that other cities have taken some steps, they've noticed this is a potential issue. I think McMinnville, for example, is one where they're programmed to try to saw cut around the sidewalk stamps and preserve them. People have taken different approaches, like lining them with brick or doing something as simple as just saw cutting them, putting them aside and then when you report the sidewalk, placing them back in the sidewalk. So it's not intended to be an elaborate monument, it's not intended to be an expensive thing to do, it's really more a matter of just taking care to take an extra step to preserve these when you can, if it's at all feasible. And it's also something, we only anticipate the issue would come up a few times a year. We're not anticipating it would be a significant effort on anyone's part, but it would be both private and public sharing in this. Our Public Works Department obviously is going out there repairing sidewalks at times. We also have redevelopment projects that happen and they wind up redoing the sidewalks along their properties. So there, it, there would have to be, the program would have to include a few different elements, and this is just very preliminary thoughts on this. We're planners, so we always think of maps, so the first thing we'd want to do is locate them and map them. And then work to decide what's a cost-effective way to preserve these things. Could be simple in the end, as simple as saw cutting, it could be lining them with something else to preserve them. And then we, we would create a database and then before sidewalk work gets done, somebody would check the database to see, you know, on this block or at this corner, is there anything we need to be taking special care about? And it would just give people a heads up before they do the work. This would obviously be coordination between planning, engineering department, specifically the GIS part of that, and then also Public Works. I think that was all the major parts. One thing I was thinking about was cost. One thing the commissioners asked about, would this put a large cost on somebody who's a private person redeveloping a property? I think this cost would be pretty minimal if you're building a new building or doing something large enough that would require you to repair the sidewalks all on the frontage, this would be a pretty minimal cost. We don't truly know what the cost would be because we haven't developed the program or figured out what the technique would be to preserve these things. So I would follow up in saying, this is something we'd work closely with Jay and with Russ Thomas, and if the cost, if they determined the cost was not minimal, then I think we'd be bound to come back to you to talk about that, because it would have to then be something that would be budgeted. But our anticipation now is that it's not something that would come up frequently. And so the recommendation from staff would be to adopt Resolution 2016-3342, directing city staff to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps and other historic markers in the public right of way.
Council Woodbridge?
I actually, I took a sidewalk walk yesterday around, because in this neighborhood there are a lot, and I noticed there are also a lot of stamps on the curbs, like you come to Washington Street and it's right there on the curb before you step onto the street. Would that also be part of this or, because we noticed, you know, where all the ADA ramps are, if there were stamps there, those are certainly gone. And so I didn't know if there's any way to include those or if that had been discussed at all.
That idea was discussed and the short answer would be, we don't know what to do about those at the moment, and that would be part of the discussion with the Public Works Department and crew. Is there, I mean, obviously they, they can no longer be right in that ramp, it has to be out of their ADA requirements or critical. But could you take that bit of the curb out and put that at the back of the sidewalk? You know, is there a way to preserve that, is that practical? So I think there would have to be discussions about what's, what's practical to do as well.
Council McKinnney?
The city manager gets tired of hearing me talk about sidewalk repairs. But I too was wondering about the encumbrances that it might occur because of ADA or some of the others. We were privileged to be a part of a city to where they, they were mindful of the historic markers and they were positioned at the edge of the sidewalk like a tombstone in a graveyard or something like that, you know? Yeah, something like that, but, you know, some of them are not easily removed. And of course, there is the encumbrance to be borne by the property owner to make sure that these sidewalks are repaired. And if it created additional encumbrance to the property owner, that's certainly something that we'd want to be mindful of creating a program. Then maybe that we partner with the property owner to be able to, to deal with these, which I'd probably fall in favor of something than that. But we mustn't create an encumbrance to make sure that all of the necessary sidewalk repairs start to take place as soon as possible, because we've, we've got people at Jeopardy. I know that from my, from where I live to the downtown core to go to Toons on Tuesday, I have every opportunity to turn an angle, ankle, break a leg, skin up my face, you know, all kinds of things that are there. But I like the direction of, of what this is going, if a partnership could be created, not to create additional encumbrances for the property owner, but to, to maybe join with them. Are some of these markings fractured already? Is every, is every stamp repairable or are we, are we going to encounter some things that are not repairable? I was referring to the post.
I can think of a few posts I've seen that seem to be in fairly good shape, but we, we don't really have a good inventory. I'm sure many of them have some damage. That's just gonna be part of the, part of the landscape due to the age of the sidewalks and the posts. You know, if it's not practical to preserve something, then there's probably not a good reason to do it. But in case of a sidewalk stamp, if it's cracked, you know, it depends what we're doing with it. But certainly the end goal is that it's, it also has to meet ADA standards. I mean, we're not gonna leave a tripping hazard in place. We'd have to come up with some other method for preserving that. Or if it's not really possible to preserve it because of damage, then that would just be that, be no different from now, I guess, so.
Thank you for your time. Council Johnson?
I, I recognize that this is a resolution directing staff to create a program, so what I would, feedback I would give you is, I echo having sat through and learned about the, the state of our streets and our sidewalks in town, to, to keep in mind cost and how to administer this program without breaking the bank. But then on the other side, last night, I was at the Hollywood Theater and learned about a community called Vanport. And I've lived in Oregon for, I think, forty-five years and never heard about Vanport and it's a community that was in Delta Park and the levee broke and it flooded out and it's gone. And, I mean, literally is gone. And I don't know if it's because I'm getting older, but I look at programs like this one and I go, if we don't find low cost and easy ways to preserve our history, how are people gonna know? I mean, Google only takes you so far. And I think having physical reminders of where we've come from and what we've done and the projects that we've built are a great way to connect us to the people that came before us. So I guess what I'm saying is go with God. But don't make a cost too much.
You brought up Google.
And God, in the same government.
Well, yeah, they're not necessarily in the same. Looking for a, a business in Salem over the weekend, Googled a business address, there it was. Drove up to it, wasn't there. Made a phone call, it went to a different business. Well, we haven't been there for four years, so you can't even trust Google. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that crosses my mind is sending us down a road we don't know how much it's gonna cost. Of course, there was my nephew was over and I gave him a, said I was gonna open a bottle of ten-year-old champagne and he said, "Can we have some of the new stuff?" So, you know, if we're preserving things, sometimes I wonder, we want to make sure that what we're preserving needs to be preserved. And that's a hard decision to make, but if staff thinks this is something they want to do, I'd certainly want to hear that part too, that they think this is worthwhile doing. I know that it makes some sense, but again, there's cost involved, there's inventory time being involved, and I just, you know, if they think it's worth doing, you know, I'd like to hear that from the staff too. I know that a lot of times they say, "No, you tell us," but this is one time I like to hear from them.
As I understand the, the resolution, we're, we're being asked to direct you to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps, et cetera. I'll get back to the et cetera. So when you have, if we were to do this, then you're gonna come back to us with the program for final adoption?
I would say we probably hadn't thought it through quite that far. I think what I said earlier was heading in that direction where we'll work with staff to determine what would it cost to do this, come up with some estimates and that if the cost wasn't minimal, we would intend to come back, because at some point it becomes a budget item that has to be anticipated and...
So I think you'll be hearing, if we, if we say go forward, we'll be hearing from you at some time in the future.
Yes, and I would, I would even modify our recommendation in saying, could call this a preliminary program or a step one, and that we return it step two, this is, I'm just flying, blind here. So Doug, should looking to see is Doug nodding or going?
Doug Ruck's Community Development Director.
So in the conversations with the Historic Preservation Commission, and this has come up over the last year and a half, questions and concerns about some of these elements that Steve said are in the landscape are disappearing. Is there a way to help preserve those because they are, they're a key identifier within the community? And so in those conversations, we said, well, what you really need to do is you need to make a recommendation to the city council, because it's creating a program. It's allocating staff time and resources, not physical dollars yet, to see if the council wants to do that. So if you were to approve this resolution, then we would go back and we would have the conversations with Public Works and the engineering and the maintenance side, look at this. The vice chair of the Historic Preservation Commission has already started gathering data for a number of years, so there's some preliminary stuff that's out there, and other, these markers and so forth that have not been inventoried. But going through that, that process and of course putting it in queue with all the other things that we're doing, and, but coming up with that program and then, and then taking it back to the Historic Commission and saying, okay, this is what staff has looked at, this is what we've looked at costs for doing these different things, is this something we should continue on with? I would see that then that's a logical step to bring that back to the council as well and say, this is what we've learned, this is what we shared with the commission, this is where they're at, this is their recommendation, do you want us to continue on with this? Because as Steve said, if we got into it and found that, having to go out and saw cut out a section of existing sidewalk, because there's gonna be an issue about what size do you need to have to make that work? How do you integrate? Do you have to dowel it into new concrete? Can it just sit there? Do you do a decorative border around it? What might that look like? That starts to get to Councilor Essens and Council McKinnney's, that starts to increase the cost. So there's kind of a low-cost method or there could be something more than that. But we don't know all of those answers yet until we sit down with our engineers and our maintenance people and say, how might this be able to work? Or might it not work? Just don't know that yet.
But I did hear you say that as this evolves, you would be coming back to the council?
Yes.
Thank you. Pleasure to the council. Council Essens?
I'm still thinking...
You're still thinking? Well, all right. Thinking out loud?
How many millions are we gonna need to put our road system together and how much time is that gonna take of staff? And then we come up with little programs like this for them to do and, I don't know, I mean, if I knew maybe a little bit more, if I had wandered around like the rest of you should, I probably should have done to see how, how wonderful this stuff is, but...
Well, we're asking to create a program to come back to us, then you'll have your answer.
Okay, well, I guess we can spend that much.
Pleasure to the council. City manager?
Well, I'd only, Mayor Council, I'd only throw in that, you know, the historic preservation is part of both a commission that you have with a whole series of volunteers there that have kind of brought it back to staff, and historic preservation fits into our tourism strategy, so another one of our plans. I think what you've, one of the things you've heard is that we want to get the blessing of council to... council to work on this, but I think that there's enough staff knowledge about, you know, we're not gonna go down the road that's gonna cost us a lot of money, but also an interest in encouraging our commissions to bring ideas to you, which is why it was here. So just if you were looking for a staff person to say, are we asking you to bless this so then we can bring you back some information, then that's what I would like to do tonight.
Counselor Bacon?
I was gonna make the motion.
Go.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we had...
I'm gonna make a motion to amend it, though. Go ahead.
Jeepers. Then why don't you just make the amended motion?
Go.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-two, directing city staff to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps and other historical markers in the public right of way.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-two. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to the main motion.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have two motions. And that is that we clearly indicate that it's for historic artifacts, not historic markers. Thank you, city manager, for that clarification earlier. I think that's more encompassing than historic markers. You want a second? Yeah. Second. The makers accept that?
I do.
As a friendly amendment? There it is. So the resolution would then read what you would be adopting, that staff are directed to create a program to preserve sidewalk stamps and other historic artifacts in the public right of way.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for. Any further discussion?
Only to say, the only reason I'm voting for this is because staff said that it's something they wanted to do.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None are hearing? It passes seven-zero. With that, we're going to now move to the item that was set over from the consent calendar before we, we're gonna do this before we go to the informational item. And we're going to now talk about resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three forty-seven. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase three new replacement vehicles for the Public Works Department from Hubbard Chevrolet using the State of Oregon Purchasing Agreement number five-five-five-five. Mr. Thomas?
Please identify yourself. Russ Thomas, Superintendent of Public Works.
Jay Harris, Public Works Director.
The proposal is to purchase three vehicles for the Public Works Department, two vehicles for the wastewater operations treatment plant, and one for Public Works Maintenance. One vehicle would be a replacement for a two thousand five, I believe, Dakota.
Yes.
That vehicle would be repurposed for the use by the Public Works Director. The second vehicle is a Chevy Trax that would be used to replace a pickup truck that's currently being used by operations staff for not only operations around the city, but for various meetings and trainings around the northwest area that they have to attend. That vehicle would be taken a look at to be repurposed to replace an older pickup in our fleet, whether it's at the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, or Public Works Maintenance. The third vehicle would be a replacement of a nineteen ninety-three Chevy truck with a service body that's currently being used by our grounds maintenance person for the maintenance of all the city facilities and grounds. That vehicle would be disposed of. That vehicle was originally purchased and used for the wastewater treatment plant, was repurposed and used by fleet maintenance, and then was repurposed and used by our grounds maintenance person currently. That vehicle is, probably has about twenty-five hundred dollars in repairs pending for that. Should this vehicle be approved, be replaced, we would not do the repairs because the repairs are approaching the value of the vehicle.
Which vehicle was that?
That's the nineteen ninety-three grounds vehicle.
I'm gonna start with Jay. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, one of the things that's key...
Identify yourself.
Jay Harris, Public Works Director. One of the things that's key in anything that we do is we keep up on our maintenance and we keep up on the replacement of items, whether it's a carpet in this building, or if it's rolling out of pickups. We typically look at replacing a automobile about the ten-year period. And the reason is that is because you can sell the vehicle and still recover some pretty good value. And at that point, you most likely aren't gonna be into engine replacements, transmission replacements, you know, the costly sort of items. So Russ has been doing this for some years now and to just try to keep newer stock in so we don't fall behind on our vehicle replacement, because we get caught up in this mode of everything's old and then we need a lot of money to, you know, to get it repaired. So this is another thing, and we do the same thing with backhoes and loaders and water trucks and street sweeper, that Russ has a spreadsheet with, how many items on it?
It's about a hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
Pieces of equipment.
Rollers, chainsaws, the whole bit. So this is part of a program that, we show these things in the budget every year, but we don't show you what we're doing for the next five years, if that makes any sense, because the list is pretty extensive. But we're trying to look out for, you know, the public dollar and try to economize the best we can. And we found that the ten-year replacement schedule is really good for vehicles, but as Russ had said, there's some vehicles, like that little Dakota, that instead of rolling it out and selling it on gov deals, that we are repurposing it, I'm gonna be using it, because I got three different offices and I'm all over the map right now. And then with a little newer pickup, he's gonna take out, and it could be a building officials pickup, it could be one of the inspectors. So we identify the weakest links as we're replacing things and bring in fresher stock. So that's sort of, I wanted to make sure you sort of knew about the program that we have. And then I would be more than happy, if somebody wants a tour, I like to give tours, I can show you the map and, you know, how we have this scheduled out. And there's a few pieces of equipment we actually keep. And Russ doesn't like that a whole lot, but we have that old flusher truck.
Yeah, nineteen eighty Chevy flusher.
There's a few things that you need to keep that just speak old and fun and good. So we're doing some things like that. There's some items that we, we don't have a really old pickup, though, you know that?
We have ninety-one. Those pickup in our fleet.
That's probably good news.
I'm gonna start with Counselor Johnson and then Counselor McKinney. They both have asked that this was pulled off the consent calendar, so we'll address your concerns. Counselor Johnson?
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just point out, I have a number of questions. Can I just roll through them? Is that all right? Okay, thanks. Hi, guys.
Hi.
First off, I did take a tour with Jay some months ago, and I saw a bunch of the equipment. And I wanna commend you both on the work you do and the atmosphere you do it in and with the equipment that you do. You were talking tonight about baling wire and duct tape or bubble gum or whatever your term was. You know, that's to be commended. And I don't want you to seem like these questions are accusatory or, I'll tell you what happened. We talked about street fee two weeks ago. And I don't know why, I don't know how, but I'm walking through the grocery store and suddenly I'm getting a bunch of questions about new cars. And how can you ask us for a fee when you're gonna go buy new cars? And so I went back to my council packet and I'm like, what the, and so I really appreciate you, Jay, kinda walking down the reasoning behind this, because that gives me ammunition to go back and say to those people, hey, look, here's the deal. But I did wanna get a few things on the record. And first off, I wanted to find out what the source of the income for this line item in the budget was. Is it general fund dollars? Is it fee dollars? Is it SDC funds? Where do those dollars come from?
For the Public Works Maintenance Vehicles, first I'll touch on the wastewater treatment plant. That, those vehicles are purchased out of the wastewater fund.
Okay.
Because they are assigned strictly to use in the wastewater department. The Public Works Maintenance Vehicles are what we call multi-funded. They're supported by a variety of funds because of their multi-use. They're used for a variety of things. Those funds are intra-fund transfers from those individual funds to support the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance Replacement Fund. That fund pays for replacement of a street sweeper, a Vector, a dump truck, the pickups and as such. When those vehicles then are assigned, their maintenance costs are assigned according to what their primary usages are and not the purchase. So the funding sources for our replacement fund is the street fund, the wastewater fund, the water fund, the stormwater fund, and the facilities fund.
Okay.
Being cognizant of the fact that in recent times, we have not had sufficient funding to replace equipment as necessary. And we got into a period of time where to replace a piece of equipment, we had to do lease purchases. Lease purchases cost you money. And so five percent, five to seven percent of the purchase of the vehicle, we were having to pay extra just to fund it over a period of time, rather than outright purchases and support. The breakdown for the contributions from those individual accounts to this fund is roughly five point nine-five percent comes from the street fund. Annual contributions, and this is, this is our current budget. Street fund has contributed twenty-five thousand dollars to our fund this year in this year's budget. Wastewater fund is contributing one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, or thirty-five point three-eight percent. Water fund is contributing one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, which is forty-one point one-seven percent. Stormwater fund is contributing twenty thousand, which is four point seven-six percent. And the facilities fund is contributing fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is twelve point seven-four percent. So if you were to go by just the contributing factors, purchase this vehicle, you could break it out the same way.
Okay. And can you email me that?
I can.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Second question. You mentioned, and I really appreciate you mentioning, the twenty-five hundred dollar repair to the vehicle. I think that goes a long way to saying, we're not just replacing stuff because we don't like it, we're replacing it because it's gonna cost us more to fix it than it's worth. And it makes fiscal sense to get you, plus, do you really want someone going out to a Public Works emergency, jumping in the car and not having it start, you know?
We wore this vehicle out.
Okay. If you keep the two thousand five Durango and you repurpose it, then it's not, I mean, technically, it's not really replacing it, it's adding another vehicle to the fleet. Is that an accurate representation?
Yeah, I do the same thing as the Dakota, not the Durango.
Oh, Dakota, sorry.
But, yeah, we're repurposing it from the wastewater plant to be a vehicle that I'll be using, and then Jill, my assistant, will be using also.
Okay, great. And so I'm guessing the Trax, just looking at the materials here, gets much better gas mileage and for the trainings and those types of things.
That's correct versus a pickup.
Versus a pickup truck. Okay, great. And then, and this is the big one for me, is the timing. Do we need to do this right now? Or could we wait until spring? Is there a reason this came tonight?
It's when we start looking at replacing vehicles, we typically do vehicle replacement this time of year. They do changes to model years, with the tail end of the twenty sixteen model year. So if we, if we don't do it now, we're gonna be into the twenty seventeen model year, which will be out in April is when they roll those out, and then you have inflationary costs. And again, it's purchasing off state purchasing contract, which has the pricing set in there, but they have an escalation clauses within that when they roll out a new model year.
There's also setting up a pickup, especially when you have to put boxes and that sort of thing on it. It can take a considerable amount of time to get the truck ordered, get it, get it set up, and then get it on the road. So I'm figuring your new truck won't be here for some time.
We're a hundred and twenty days out after placing order, because these are not sitting online. They're factory-built because it's a government purchase. So we're typically a hundred and twenty days out. So again, if we wait till later, we're into another budget cycle.
Okay. Thank you so much. You've been hugely helpful, and I appreciate you guys staying tonight and taking the time with me. Thank you.
Counselor McKinney?
So the fifty thousand dollar outlay is a hundred and twenty days out? You have a vehicle here that's fifty thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents?
That's two vehicles.
That's two vehicles. All right.
Correct.
All right. And they have to be equipped with boxes and be prepared for the job that they're going to be...
Correct.
Going to be doing. The thing that I was reading for, and I did find, is that it was part of budgetary ask for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Some of us didn't recall discussing this in the budget meeting, that it was there. So I don't know whether it was discussed in the budget meeting or whether it was just one of the general information lines that went there. I'm inclined to look favorably upon these purchases, realizing that things have to be replaced in order to keep operations going smoothly and other things. But at the present, I think the phrase that Patrick referred to is timing on some of these things, is that we're spending significant amounts of money, it seems like, in short periods of time to try and to keep up. What is the savings by doing it now unless we wanted to wait till the new budget? Do you have an idea how much money it cost us to wait?
It would just be CPI or inflation, so three percent, maybe? Five percent, something like that?
At the end of the model year, are there better buys?
We're nearing the end.
We're at the end of the model year.
Okay. So even if we went by several more months, does the buys get better?
No.
Counselor Essens?
Seems like if, I remember a while back when I was running fleets, there wasn't just the issue of the vehicle and the repair, it was the cost of having the vehicle down. And as I recall, we tracked, and I think you probably do the same thing, we tracked how often the vehicle was down. And so there, if you've got like this one vehicle, it's gonna have to be twenty-five hundred dollars worth of repairs, then there's the cost of having it repaired. That costs time and material, but you also don't have that vehicle while it's being repaired. So, and especially we're coming down into the winter months. Does that figure into your thinking at all?
Well, it does, to an extent, because it's a special setup vehicle with toolboxes and the materials necessary for the grounds maintenance. If we don't have that vehicle, we don't have another, we go into a pickup truck and try to unload stuff out of tool bins into the back of the truck and run back and forth to get everything, because it's not capable of carrying everything that our groundskeeper may need when he gets to a job. So there is additional cost to that, which is really tough to quantify. But having, not having the vehicle that you need that's set up the way you need it, it causes delays and additional time to complete a job.
One thing I can add about downtime also is that keeping newer vehicles, you minimize the downtime with, you know, less than ten-year-old vehicles. That's number one. Number two, the vehicles from the eighties and nineties were poor, the seventies even worse. The vehicles nowadays with fuel injection and the computer systems, our mechanics know pretty much, when the check engine light goes on, it goes in, and major items are usually taken care of sooner... taken care of sooner than later. So the technology is getting better. We're looking at a network fleet system too, where it gives real-time monitoring, we've been evaluating that, where it's continually sending information to our fleet mechanics. We're considering a program like that, but the vehicles are on the road more often than not, our downtime is somewhat minimized.
Follow on?
Follow on?
As I recall, you increased by one, your staffing for maintenance as far as?
Facilities and grounds.
Yeah, right. So you've got one more person. Do you need an additional vehicle for that for that person or?
The what we, the vehicle we take a look at that would might be repurposed, we do have a couple of just plain pickup trucks that we use for seasonal temps and for smaller jobs to hold things back and forth. When we don't want to drive a back or back and forth for a multiple day job, we utilize that for shuttling. So they they can use that vehicle, he's been working with the other person. At this point, we're good with what we got. We don't need to buy a vehicle every time we hire another person if it's not necessary. In this case, it's not.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
One thing that hasn't come up in this discussion, but I'll raise as part of the risk management function of of being the city attorney, is you have a 1993 vehicle that the safety features that have changed from 1993 until the current model year, it's like going from the Model T to, you know, going to the moon. And so to the extent that we're replacing really old equipment that in the event that we had either an accident and an employee injured, or even just having something as simple as a backup camera, that would prevent accidents from happening, happening and those additional costs, I think have a value to the city. It's hard to measure because it's hard to it's hard to calculate the value of of an accident that doesn't occur or an injury that doesn't, isn't as severe. But I do think that there is a value to the city from a risk management and workers' comp potential in in replacing especially a vehicle of that age.
Thank you. Any further comments? Council Johnson.
I I'm just going to rant for a minute, not rant, but with the, yeah, pine, that's a good word. With the street maintenance fee, the gas tax, and whatever else we decide to do with roads, we have to have community buy-in. And we need, I and and I, I I'm just going to say this out loud, it feels like we're swimming upstream with those when these types of things come forward after we have hard discussions about how to fix streets. And I don't know if it's just, I didn't anticipate this being a problem, so maybe it's just dumb luck, but you know, I I would hope going forward, and I'm I'm going to do it too, I would hope going forward, especially from public works, we need to be really mindful of educating the public about these things. And so what I would ask is if in the future, before we talk about street funding again, if you see a capital expense coming, if you could give us a heads-up or a a staff report that kind of outlines some of the questions we're asking, so that way we have the arguments to say, okay, yeah, we need to spend this money because in the long term, it it makes fiscal sense and we're trying to be good, good stewards of this money. I just personally felt unprepared for kind of the backlash I got on this. And that isn't a criticism of you guys at all, it's just a situation. And I think it is because, and I just want to remind the council, the street maintenance fee, the gas tax, whatever we decide to do on that is is a live wire, and we need to be careful how much we wave that thing around. And I think this is, this is just a symptom of how much concern people are putting into that issue. So I just basically giving everyone a warning. That was it, thanks.
I'd like to respond to that. I think we could do a better job in the budgeting process. The long-range financial planning that our finance director's working on, a component of that will be a five-year, probably even plus, capital improvement plan. That will be for street, storm, water, wastewater, facilities, and I'd like to include the vehicle replacement as a five-year component of all that. So then when we get into the budgeting process, you'll have in January, February, the the long-range plan, and then the actual budget will come up, you know, later in the spring, where you'll see the one-year snapshots of that. So I think we can do a better job, you know, getting the long-range information, and then each budget year, make sure that you can somehow know that you heard about some pickups being purchased and and why, and those sorts of conversations. Because public works, it does have large budgets, we got big machinery and and big costs going on, you know, to keep the city running, and it's important to keep you guys in informed of our maintenance and our replacement programs.
Council Baker.
I believe in doing maintenance, and I've lived through the past eight years here where we weren't, we weren't replacing computers, we weren't replacing cars, and it caused way more expense not to do it than to do it. So I completely, completely agree with that. I think the thing that we face is that we we deal with a public, you know, you, when we were talking about the pool, 51% of our kids in this community live in poverty. So when you're saying, well, we're going to go to you and ask for $8 for the street fee and they can't afford it, but then two weeks later, we're saying, we're going to spend this amount of money, they don't understand the different buckets that the money comes from, they don't understand that, and that's not, that's our job and the budget committee's job. So it comes, it comes from the ability that they can't buy a new vehicle, but we're asking money for new streets. So it's just an added stress in, you know, the economy and getting getting to this next step. But I completely support doing the maintenance. We've, we've only suffered from dragging it out through the years. But we have to be mindful of how the public sees it because because they don't, they don't see it the same way we do, they're not faced with it every day. So that's, I think that's the reason it got pulled, just so it could be on the record to explain it, and that's the reason it got pulled, so people can really understand this is a better use of their money than not doing it. But it's not a judgment of you at all.
Council McKenney.
I think it was important to pull at you guys for the fact that we needed to discuss it so that when the public hears about these things or whatever, it's been talked about well, it's been vetted well and other things. I live next to a guy, his synopsis was this, it's only a sewer truck, does it go, does it stop? You know? So maybe at the base of thinking, you know, it's that way, but I'm well aware of it.
Until it's his sewer that's backed up.
Yeah, unless it's his school, right. But I I think it's important that to pull this one anyway and have a significant discussion so that when, when the public does want to talk to us about substantive things that they've, they know that we've discussed it well.
Any further discussion? Pleasure to the council, John. Council Johnson?
I would move we approve Resolution Number 2016-3347, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase three replacement vehicles for the public works department from Hubbard Chevrolet using the State of Oregon Purchasing Agreement Number 5555.
Then moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2016-3347. Is there any further discussion? The question has been called for. I see no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign? Did you, you're opposed?
No, I said aye, I just said a little late.
Motion passes 7-0, I think we better, maybe next month. Let's let's take a break, 15 minutes, 9:15, you're back into your chairs. Fifteen minutes, nine fifteen, you're back into your chairs. Now, before I start, there was one this afternoon that was started out at seven three and went to six nine. Is that the one you're talking about? Okay. Fukushima. All right, we're back in session, and we now move to an informational item on our agenda, an update on Manufactured Home Rehabilitation and Repair Grant Program, application materials and guidelines. And who's carrying this one? Says Director Rux, but I don't know who. All right. Take your time. You earned that one. Thank you, Joe.
He'd be booing, "I'm tired."
Were. Were.
Community Development Director, this is an informational piece. The Affordable Housing Commission had put together an amendment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program where we added a new section 7.4 dealing with a grant program for manufactured homes. Council had approved that resolution that made modifications of those policies. As part of that, there was language in there about the commission to create some guidelines as part of this grant program. So we've had a couple of meetings and we've talked through what that, those guidelines would be. So this report is basically outlining what a notification process would be for the grants. And so keep in mind, what we talked about is doing grants from, you know, a hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, up to a thousand dollars for an individual manufactured home. So think of something that might be in a park, or it could be on an individual lot that had some repairs that needed to be done to it. And mobile homes that are older than nineteen seventy-seven don't qualify for any HUD funding, so we've applied for the grant program, the four hundred thousand dollars, through the Infrastructure Finance Authority of Business Oregon. That's in review process now. But that would deal with manufactured homes that are nineteen seventy-eight and newer. We've got this seventy-seven and older. So that program got set up as a funding mechanism. The other option in that is that, through a solicitation, we could do a grant to an organization which could be granted up to ten thousand dollars, and they would actually then go and provide the administration process. So the Affordable Housing Commission was looking to go out for a solicitation on that program basically next week, right after Thanksgiving. But we had to have the guidelines put in place first. So what's in your package is kind of a solicitation, an application that would have to be done. There's an Attachment A, which goes through eligibility criteria, minimum threshold criteria, and then application criteria. And that's the piece that has to be scored. So the commission's walked through about the scoring process and what numbers they wanted to apply to the criteria under the application section. And they ended up coming up with a number of thirty-one. With the most important being is that the project provides new affordable housing or new affordability and availability through retention and rehabilitation of existing housing within the city. So this is dealing with a housing stock that serves a lot of our low or very low-income population within the community. The next piece in the packet is the guidelines themselves. And we thought it was important that the council saw this material before we went out for a solicitation. You normally see the NOFA when we're doing the loans, so we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the solicitation and the criteria and the scoring that would occur. So the commission came up with criteria that deal with income. So this is again going back to eighty percent of the area meeting income, so it kind of falls in line with the NOFA process, what we do for loans. It's criteria or guidelines that we're looking to use these funds for very low and low-income families or households. Under the matching funds, it's kind of restating what we already had in the criteria before, but it's looking at that match, so there's a one-third match. So think of it, if you had a thousand dollar repair you needed to do, you could apply for three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. You've got to come up with that three thirty-three. And then kind of look at matches. And there's some other organizations within the community who've talked about providing or the ability to possibly provide matching funds as well. And then we talked about in-kind, because there's things that kind of meet the numeric process, but you might have a surface club organization or a faith-based organization that says, "We can bring manpower and skill sets to a project to help minimize that cost or reduce that cost as well." The terms, the commission talked about, we wanted to make sure that in doing grants is that we're ensuring that that housing stock is being used for very low and low-income families for a five-year period. The concern in part would be if you did a grant, somebody was there, and then they moved away, and somebody else then rented it, and it was to a family who was not in the very low or low income. The commission had concerns that that could occur, and so they wanted some guarantees or assurances, and so we put that in the guidelines. If you don't spend all of your grant money in a one-year period, is that you have to give it back, and that would be for an individual or for an organization. The balance you have to return, and we can put that back into a pool. And then on reporting. So if, for an individual or an organization, is give a quarterly report what you've done for those improvements, and then an annual report. And I think the annual report really fits more if it's an organization. So if through this process, the Affordable Housing Commission did a recommendation to the council, and the council agreed, and you granted, use a number of ten thousand, it's easy, is that they would have to do quarterly reports of what they've expended those funds on, and then they'd have to do at the end of one year an annual report. And they have to spend the money within one year as well. So it's kind of the, it's the monitoring to make sure. Now, Finance Director and I have kind of gone through the budget, and I brought this up before when we made amendments to the policies, is that we do have a budget adjustment, supplemental budget process we have to go through. And so Matt and I have gone through those numbers, and we believe we're really, really close. We might be a dollar off or adjustment, but if you get a supplemental to come back to you. But it's really taking funds, taking a little bit out of the loan. We have money in contingency, putting contingency money up into this grant line item so that we have adequate funds to be able to do the program that you've already approved. So just wanted to touch base with you, show you what the commission's come up with, because again, we're looking at right after Thanksgiving is to do the solicitation for either individuals or organizations to apply for a grant, and then we'll go through the scoring process. And any recommendations the Affordable Housing Commission comes up with, we'll come back to you for your final action.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Rux? Counselor Johnson, Counselor McKinney.
So a couple of questions. First off being, you see this program mostly being used by service organizations or other groups that help these folks. Is that, who mostly is going to be filling out these applications, do you think?
I think so.
Okay. Follow on. If someone who lives in a manufactured home, maybe low-income, reaches out to you about this program, is this going to be, how are we going to administer it? Is it going to be, here's the application, go away? Or is it going to be, here's the application, can I kind of help you through it? Just because reading this, I felt it was a little government to ease, you know, and it might be intimidating to some folks.
Well, as we always do, when people need assistance filling out their applications, we do that. We can also, I think the Affordable Housing Commission members, if somebody needs assistance, given the individuals and their engagement, it's easy enough for me to mention or work with them and say, if we do get the questions, can we, if somebody needs assistance, can one of you sit down for a half an hour and help them fill out an application?
Yes, thanks.
So I think we can approach it two ways, from staff and the commission members.
Counselor McKinney.
This is rudimentary. Say a grant of a thousand dollars was issued to a certain party for a particular...
About areas, Stephen.
Say that a grant of a thousand dollars was granted to a particular mobile home project or whatever. They used five hundred dollars of it, but a year goes by and there's a remaining five hundred dollars. Who's holding the five hundred dollars? And what assurances do you have that the unused portion is going to be returned to you? Because who's holding the grant? Who's monitoring the grant?
Well, city attorney and I will have to prepare a grant agreement document that anybody who's awarded funds will have to sign. It will have language in that agreement that if you do not expend the funds that you've been granted, whatever, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, and let's say they spend a hundred and fifty of it, is that they'll have to report back to us, you know, did they finish the project? Did they spend all of the funds? And if they did not spend all of the funds, it will be in the grant agreement that you have to return the unexpended portion of the grant funds. So we're granting, we give them the three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Do they then have to go perform to do those improvements? At the end of that project or that one year, they have to report back to us. And we'll try to make the reporting as simple as possible. They would have to return any unused portion of the grant.
So there is some risk involved. They might have spent the balance because they needed groceries.
The commission talked about that. It's interesting that came up, because we talked about, well, what if somebody, you know, got a grant for three hundred and thirty-three dollars, but all of a sudden, you know, somebody was going to turn off their power, and so they need to pay their electricity bill first. And the commission said, there's that risk that's there. Now, that's on an individual. You may have an organization, because the commission talked about just the bandwidth of staff to be able to administer things. If you did a grant to an organization, they did the reporting, you're putting the onus on that organization to monitor and make sure that the project and the funds have been expended, because they would be on the hook that if they haven't expended the money or, well, they're monitoring it. So they would actually coordinate with the resident of that unit to do those improvements, so it's not just giving them the money. So you've got two different ways it might happen. You have more exposure and risk if you're doing it to an individual rather than to an organization.
Any other questions or comments? How soon are you going to be ready to run this out?
Next week. If the council is okay with what we're giving you information on tonight. I informed the commission, after Thanksgiving, we'd go out with a solicitation. So that would be on the website. We'll put something in the graphic as well. We'll open it up. For organizations, we may give, you know, two or three weeks. It's kind of first come, first served. Whoever gets an application in, then the commission would review it. So the thing of it is, we got this line item of funds, and we think it'll end up at about fifteen thousand. So thinking about, we could grant ten thousand dollars to an organization. That could leave us then with five or three, depending on how we want to end up with it, we won't be able to do to individuals. So we're trying to respond to what the need is out there. And remember, this is in part kind of a bridge with the hope that we're going to get the four hundred thousand dollar grant through the Community Development Block Grant, where the housing authority would act as the administrator for that to do the same thing. But if we get that grant award, when Darcy Reynolds was here and was talking about that, is you got to go through this environmental assessment first. And so it may not be until, you know, summertime before there might be some dollars actually going out under that program. Yet we know from the Housing Commission's side of it is that there are people today who need assistance. It may be, I need to redo my ADA grant. It may be that there's some electrical that needs to be done in a manufactured home. It may be a water heater. There's just a long variety or a long list of needs that they have come up with, with their conversations in the community.
What organizations have you identified that would be the organization rather than individual?
Habitat for Humanity is one that has come up a number of times, because they've got their Brush with Kindness program. Then a couple of the members have talked about, there may be some of the faith-based organizations. So some, out of the ministerial association, there may be some collaboration that might come together based upon the membership of the different congregations and say, maybe we can do this. Also have a conversation with the housing authority. Since they've administered a program in McMinnville through the CDBG, and they're applying, and they are our partner in our grant now, they might have an interest as well. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it very much. We're going to move on to council business, and the first item on there, is there anybody that needs to talk to Matt about the financial report? Counselor Johnson?
I emailed some questions in. Did you get those, Matt?
I don't recall specifically what they were...
Oh, okay. I'll just email them to you again. It's not a huge deal. I mean, we're talking about like fifteen hundred bucks, so it's nothing.
None appearing? Then, thank you. Appreciate you remaining, Doug. I mean, Matt, or Doug too, for that matter. Both of you. Now, next item, I'm going to have Sue kind of lead us on this one. This is a discussion on a formal process for managing proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Sue Ryan, City Recorder. Basically, we don't have a process. I mean, pretty much people ask, and Bob asks me what I think, and I say, I think we should do it. We do get a lot of requests from National Day of, and as Truman can tell you, there's a website somewhere that says like National Soup Day, National Bubble Gum Day, National Popcorn Day. So I just sent an email out to my fellow city recorders and asked kind of what they did, and provided you with a synopsis. and provided you with a synopsis. And then you have in front of you kind of the staff report boiled down into two pages. Some cities require local only. We've focused on that in the last few years. Some cities require that the presenter or the requester actually come and accept or give a presentation. So I did not really find any cities that limited a number. Generally, if they set criteria, that seemed to sort of limit it.
I believe Tuolatin limited it to four.
Yeah, four. And Loma County limited it to, what did Linda Growth tell me? Only like three per commissioner per, they have a very strange system. And she would just like to do away with them altogether, but that's another thing. So I'll pull you up some stats, which you also have in front of you. So I looked today just to see what we have actually done. And you have one more coming before you at your next meeting for Frank Douglas's retirement. And, you know, it's not a problem. It's just, we're trying to come up with some more formal processes for some of the things that I deal with for you. And I just thought I'd bring it to you and have some feedback. So this was something the mayor and I had talked about, oh, a little while ago. I can't remember how long. And so I finally got it written up.
One of the things behind this is we get the questions, do you do a proclamation for this? Or do you do a proclamation for that? And I don't know what questions may be coming to you. Will you, you know, will you take, will you do a proclamation for this? Or will you do a proclamation for that? I got an email last week. I don't know, I don't remember the source of it. I think it was internal, but that's neither here nor there. It wasn't from the outside, about recognizing the success of our high school water polo group. Was that your mail? And the proclamation has been a tool that we've used in the past. Well, how do we, you know, we could just, we could clutter the agenda. We can get into nonsensical things, or we can represent and give credibility within the community. And that's what Sue and I are looking for, is something along that line. Of the ones that are out there, I think the one that really is probably the one that I would suggest that Sue and I build on and bring it back to you would be something modeled after the one from the city of Hillsborough.
Now, Hillsborough did an interesting thing. They chose some criteria, but they also chose to emphasize certain areas. Let me see if I can pull that package up or page up.
Well, they did. What I'm saying is model it after that with what our desires and needs are. We don't, I'm not, I don't say adopt theirs, I said model it after theirs.
Yeah. So, yeah, I understand that point. I'm just, hang on a second. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Woodbridge?
Just clarifying. Are you saying, talking about Hillsborough, their actual proclamation in the format or their process?
No, their resolution, which is a resolution establishing a policy. Not the formatting of a proclamation, but the policy. And I think it's got some good points to it. And I think the others are, you know, they're either like Tuolatin is very restrictive, and others that are kind of nice, but, you know, how's it going to fit in? Or you have, only, it can only come from you guys. It can't come from the outside.
So Hillsborough's, which I put up on the screen, you notice that they pointed out some things like their vision program. They got a little more specific as far as things they wanted to emphasize. And, you know, you can make a statement of sorts with proclamations. They do draw attention. One of the things that I like about them, as you've noticed when we have groups come, you get people involved in your local government, and it makes them happy. And it really is very low cost. I make a very pretty certificate with a seal, and the mayor reads it. So, you know, I think they serve a purpose. They're ceremonial in function, but you can also use them, you know, to make a fine point if you wish.
We could even do one for aging communities. So what I think Sue is asking for here is to get some sense of where what you would like to recommend, to have the Council give direction on how to handle the proclamation request. Do you even want a policy? Or do you just want to let it flow? Counselor Johnson, Counselor Bacon?
She was first.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Bacon?
And that's a perfect example of how I think the policy should be. I think it should be mayor's discretion. You're the one that has to do the dog and pony show. So why, I mean, that would just be my opinion.
Okay, Counselor Bacon?
And I do like how ours comes from the public, because of what I fear, and I've had this come to our attention before. If it doesn't come from the public to us, and it's coming directly from us, and we forget somebody, we're in trouble. If we wait for them, you know, a sports team or someone to nominate or go to the mayor, then it's a much safer way, because we can say, well, that it's this way because it's been brought to our attention. Someone brought it to us.
The only thing I would point out is that of your statistics, most of them are from staff. They're not, not a great deal are from the community. Because National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is the police department. National Public Works Week is the public works department. So you really only have a couple of local ones. And I'll say, I'm very proud of the cheerleaders, but every time we do that, then I have someone contact me about the other sports teams at the high school. So, you know.
The water polo was, the idea was they're state champions.
Yeah.
Counselor McKinney?
Well, I think it's important that we pay attention to the notables. I mean, there are certain things that come, that come to the city that are worth recognizing. I would like to see the examples of some of the information that Sue found, or Mr. Mayor, that you found, so that we could kind of ponder that. You know, we meet, you know, two times a month. Well, is that no more than twenty-four, you know, a year, that type of thing? Want to, you know, you know, the opportunity for at least two a month or something like that. But our criteria should be noteworthy events, noteworthy people, noteworthy organizations that might be there. And I like the idea of bringing some type of criteria in organization to that.
Sue did give, Sue did give you some examples.
Yeah, there is some information.
Those examples that are written, not very many cities have written policies. So what you see in the staff report, those little paragraphs, those are basically those city recorders' emails back to me. Hillsborough and Bend were the only two that had formal, like adopted by resolution processes. So they're all over the map in how they've done them. This is the way we've done it for them.
And that's what I see here. I think the criteria, that part of the criteria that Counselor McKinney was alluding to needs to be, we need to be sensitive to that. Counselor Corey?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't, I don't see a real need for a resolution on this type of thing. I think coming through the councilors or directly to the mayor, and we feed them to the mayor and let the mayor vet which ones are worthy of proclamation. I do think local only is a good idea. And if there's an exceptional water polo team, you know, that would be a good, you know, one to add diversity to your leading. If they're exceptional like that, it certainly should be one of the proclamation. But I don't know that we need a resolution for that.
Okay. This is, this is why we brought it. City Attorney?
You look so reluctant to call me mayor.
That wasn't reluctance.
Truman.
We're ignoring you.
Truman Stone, City Attorney. I will remind the Council that we actually do have some minimal policies found in the Council Rules in Section 11. There's two short paragraphs, if you'd like me to read those. So it says, Section 11 Proclamations, 11.1 requests. It says, Organizations, citizens, or councilors may request proclamations that proclaim a specified date or dates to recognize the efforts of various community groups and individuals. And then it says, upon receipt, the city recorder will notify the mayor. Upon the approval of the mayor, the city recorder will prepare the proclamation for the mayor's signature. And then 11.2 says, reading of proclamations. At the discretion of the mayor, a proclamation will be read at the council meeting and presented or mailed to the requesting organization or group. And that's, that's the complete reading of Section 11. But back to Counselor Corey's point about whether you need a resolution or not. I would say, since it's already in the Council Rules, if you want to change that process, then we should do an amendment to the Council Rules.
Counselor Woodbridge?
Well, yeah, I agree with Counselor Corey. That seems kind of our somewhat organic process seems to work just fine. You know, we don't have people coming to ask for a proclamation on National Popcorn Day. And, yeah, I was thinking, looking on this other side about having people present here, and what Sue was saying, you know, it's community engagement and involvement. Because there have been some times where you've proclaimed to us, and there's nobody out there. And it's nice, but it would be a lot nicer if there was one person or some people. So if, yeah, if that means changing our Council Rules to have someone present for that, then I think that would be a good idea.
Sue?
Council Rules is about process, and I, I understand that we have process. The thing that can, I don't want to encumber a future recorder is the city is a dynamic, ever-changing entity. And I've seen a lot of change in my two years here. And sometimes it's hard enough to do your day job, let alone remember to do it exactly a certain way, because there's a resolution that says you have to do it that way. So I, I like organic, I'm fine with that. I just wanted some clarification. And you may not see them, but Bob, I know, gets emails all the time, because he'll bring them to me and say, what do you think? So we do get requests for National Construction Safety Week, Walk a Mile Day, you know, because he's just on listservs for mayors. And, you know, we have to wade through them. And we, we tend not to do it unless we know that there's a local event going on. So that's just my two cents.
Did you get some information that we can digest now?
I think so.
Okay. Any other comments before we sign off? Counselor Johnson?
I didn't push it. I would like to, oh, on this topic or in general?
On this topic. I don't see anything else in here that says general. Or lieutenant, or, go ahead. What do you got?
I'm all good.
So what do you want under Council Business that you want to generalize?
When I applied for this position, I mentioned in my comments that, and tonight, we repealed the ordinances for possession of less than an ounce of marijuana.
What kind of an ounce?
Less than, uh, aardvark, aardvark.
Aardvark.
I can tell you what it means, Sue, I looked it up.
Aardvark du bois.
Let him finish.
Yeah, can I finish? I've talked enough tonight.
It's French.
Personally, I would like to see the issue of taxing medical marijuana come back. And I would like to repeal that. If not, then I would like, if that isn't something, then I think we should have a larger discussion about what types of prescription medication or medication, other types of medication that we could potentially tax.
Well, I don't know about medications, but we could tax cigarettes and we could tax vapor.
And I guess what I'm saying is that if...
That's within our province.
My point is, if we're going to tax a medicine, because medical marijuana is a medicine, I would like to see that, I would like to see that...
Now, that's still debatable.
Oh, well, I'd like to see that repealed, because I consider that a medicine, if that's what it's going to be designated as. Then whatever, what other types of medication would we be open to taxing then? I'm just saying, I would like to see medical marijuana tax brought back to be repealed.
Do you want to stay here until about midnight?
No, I'm saying, can we schedule it for a different evening or to have the discussion?
You started it, I opened the door, and you started it. Go ahead, Counselor Essing.
Medical marijuana, I guess, is what we're taxing, is that it? But we now have recreational marijuana.
Which we're taxing, also taxing that too.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see any reason to have it if we can't tax it. I, I'm...
Say that one more time? You see no reason to?
Well, we tax cigarettes, we tax alcohol. And I see no problem taxing recreational marijuana. If we want to talk about medicinal, you know, that could be another issue. But this is a pretty tough issue right now, and I think it's going to get tougher. Because I've read the current, or the proposed nominee that's going to be in charge of this whole issue, and it's going to be a major federal issue as to whether or not the feds will now start coming in and battling the states on this. And that's why I was asking some questions, because I think we see that coming down the road. So I hate to see us bring this up, because it's going to be, it's enough of an issue for the public as it is. It may come back on us, but we're spending a lot of, we're going to spend a lot of time on this. And if the city can't get anything out of it, I really don't...
Counselor McKinney, Counselor Bacon?
Well, it's interesting to review the voting results of all of the cities that voted to tax marijuana this time. Every one succeeded, in terms of clarifying their rules and their laws there. So, and that's just in Yankhill County and some of the others around there. But, I mean, it's, it's just like the legislature, legislature, you know, just wait two years and something's changed there, and then you got to go back and do some of the others here. But I, but I think, I think we're trending, we have trended to lead in the right direction rather than, than to regroup, second guess, and some of the other things. Because this story is not finished yet, so it's there. But I had Gail Jensen from, from the county email me the results of the election, just as it referred to Yankhill County, and every one of those measures succeeded.
I follow on to that. I believe statewide, all cities that were, had gone to the vote of the, or gone to a vote of the people to participate in the taxing were all affirmative. I believe they were. Counselor Bacon?
Neither Pat nor I, I believe, are questioning recreational marijuana in the tax. We are merely saying that we shouldn't tax people's medicine. Whether you agree it's medicine or not, doctors are prescribing it, therefore it is medicine. And we are taxing people who are using it for cancer and other things. And it's not insured, so they're paying. They're paying, it doesn't, it's not covered in insurance. They are paying with their money. These are old women with cancer, and that's what he's saying. No, I'm not questioning the taxation of recreational marijuana at all. That's fine. I, I, I'm...
Counselor Essing?
I get that. I just don't know what the feeling of the rest of the Council is on it. But there's certainly an argument to make in that area.
Go ahead.
I just simply like to have it put on an agenda at some point, because I know it's late. So, you know, to maybe look at it and have a robust discussion about whether it's fundamentally fair to tax a medication.
Counselor Corey? Counselor Corey?
I'd just like to put a footnote on, on this. I, I think we need to wait until the state has decided how they're going to handle the taxing of medical marijuana. I don't think that decision has been made yet, and once that decision is made, it's going to come, filter down to the counties and to the cities, and it will be done differently according to the state. But at this point, I'm not willing to open that back up.
Counselor Bacon?
I don't believe the state taxes medical marijuana, do they?
Doug Rox, the state had indicated that they are not taxing medical marijuana.
Good discussion.
And I just.
It was a good discussion. City Attorney?
I, I would just say that I think Newburgh is in the minority of communities that do tax the medical marijuana.
Good discussion, and I concur with what the city attorney is saying on, on the medical marijuana. My only, the only concern I have is, I don't, I, I concur. I concur with the idea of the medical. I would, I would not resist the concept, but right now, with what's going on within the communities, and what's going on within the legislature, and what may or may not occur at the federal level, I would suggest that we maybe just kind of sit back and watch for a few months. But to, but with that as a, as a goal, but I, I would, I would really say, let's, let's just be a little cautious to see kind of what the, we see the stage is set, but we don't see all of the figures on the stage yet, if I can use that as an analogy. But I do concur. I would have no, no reservation. If the climate was right, I would say, "Let's repeal any taxation on medical marijuana." I have no, no resistance to that. My resistance is the timing. Counselor Essing and Counselor Corey?
I would just suggest that everybody pull up Senator Sessions and his, and look up his positions on marijuana, and where he stands.
Counselor Corey?
Well, I was just going to say, I understand the state is not taxing medical marijuana. However, originally, they had said that they were going to come up with legislation ordering the counties and cities to either allow them to tax or not when we passed the tax back then. That was my understanding, and we're still waiting on that. That's what, that's what I'm referring to for the state, rather than what they're doing, saying they're not going to tax. They were going to come down and say, "Either our tax is legal or it's not legal." It's not legal?
That was recreational, that you're talking about.
Let's let the city attorney answer that, please.
So there, you know, after Measure 91, there's been a number of bills, and I can't remember all the numbers. I think Doug probably can, though. He's got a better memory than I do about this stuff. But there was some pretty clear statements about not taxing medical marijuana in the, whatever bill it was, but what, what ended up in state law. Then there was also a explicit intent expressed to preempt the field and only allow the 3% tax through a vote process for local taxes. The, there was some ambiguity, though, later in the statute and how it was written, that at least, I think, leaves an open question whether taxes that were adopted prior to Measure 91 are, for lack of a precise term, grandfathered in. And my understanding is we're not the only city that are collecting a tax that they believe was grandfathered in. But we've talked about it before, counsel, and I'll just repeat again here. It's not, it's not a clear-cut issue in either direction, whether the legislature fully preempted the city or not. It seems that that was their intent, but they could have been more explicit in, in carrying out that intent, which I think leaves that open question. But I, the information I saw was the same as what the mayor said. I think there was approximately 100 municipalities in the state that put the 3% recreational tax to vote, and it passed in all, and, and most of the numbers I saw were somewhere in the 75% range of pass rates, so, or 75 to 25 against. I, I think most of them in the county were very close to that number, so.
Are we okay to just kind of be patient for a little bit before you bring it up?
Yeah.
But a good discussion, and thank you for bringing it up, because it's something that we do have to address, and I, I tend to concur on the medical side. I have no problem there. It's just the timing that I'm concerned about. And I don't know that I'm that concerned about Mr. Sessions at this time. He's only one person today. We'll see what happens. Again, patience. So is there anything further for council business that we didn't identify before?
I dare you.
I'm, I'm looking at the city attorney, too. Counselor McKinney, we're not through yet. Counselor Corey?
In regards to this, I would like to hear some testimony from the medical community in regards to this as well, to find out how, where, who, why. People that are receiving medical prescriptions, are they, are they really medical prescriptions? Are they prescriptions of convenience or some of the other things? I'd, I'd be interested in, in getting some educated testimony from, from those parties.
I will share that concern. I'm sure the city managers also heard that, and we'll have some discussions on how we can move that direction. Very good. Are you now ready? Oh, all right. We got to, there is a process that we have to go through. We are adjourned.
I thought we were having an executive session.